Good evening. All right. The other lady has been a part of it for all since kind of near. At least I felt it was in the home. It's home.
By digging.
They can move to earth. Oh, they perform and so. And they don't call it. When you was take. Manager.
Was good year to get that word built.
Yes. It was.
Bullshit.
Yes. No, there were starts.
Yes. Yeah.
Why is why here? This is serious.
Good evening and welcome to the little dump Kitlee community hall meeting. For Monday, November the third, twenty twenty five, here at the council chambers. Um, for a all this meeting to order, uh, like to introduce, uh, our, our staff and our council here tonight. With councillor Downey, councillor Oostroff, councillor Renault, councillor eighty, Mayor Borough, councillor Brayton. And we have our staff, director of finance, CEO and deputy clerk present. And quite a few in the gallery. So welcome and thank you for coming. So I call this meeting in order. Can I adoption the agenda, please? Moved by councillor Brayton, second five mayor borough. Any questions? All those in favor? Bones carry. Thank you. Disclosure of interest. Is there any disclosure of interest this evening? That's councillor Oostroff.
Um, item five point four, um, I will be stepping out of the room for that discussion as I'm on the cemetery board.
Okay, thank you councillor Oostroff. All right, uh, we have, uh, number four, four point one is a delegation. So, uh, the first delegation is concerning concerns regarding potential development. So have Stacy Burt Birch and Catherine Burton, uh, please approach the podium. And, uh, the time is, uh, show her face. Go off.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Um, appreciate everybody being here. Uh, my name is Stacy Burge. I'm from Mother Barnes, the Appleton township. Catherine Burden, Elizabeth Kitlee Township. Um, we are the residents of the Elizabeth Kitlee Township in Athens. Um, we just have some concerns and questions, um, that we have been emailing and trying to get some, a meeting that was set with Burn Bray. We spoke there too. Uh, there is still a couple few questions that some of the residents have if I could just run through this quickly.
Yeah, please go ahead.
Um, we're just looking at the definition between the agricultural versus the commercial with regards to the large scale farming of, um, operations such as burn rate. Uh, of four barns with approximately fifteen thousand chickens per barn. Uh, the maintenance of the road and the proposed, uh, roads leading to the proposed site. I, oh, sorry, uh, reduction of, uh, the speed roads like, uh, the, the speed limits, uh, due to the increases, uh, commercial traffic. Um, safety of farming community and schools with increased traffic. Uh, where is the main entrance going to be for the buildings that are being built? Um, Mother Barnes, Line Nine Johnson. We'd like to know that. Um, uh, initiating contact with the M O E, uh, with regards to water consumption. And, um, if our wire, uh, pack, uh, pack before, thank you. Our water table can handle the water usage. Uh, requesting the dug wells from Burn Bray be cased down, uh, as to prevent the potential of sulfur water contamination. If it a pocket to protect neighboring water supply. Uh, environmental hazards with regards to waste disposal as well as health effects. Um, wasn't sure if this was going to be platform. I was sort of hoping like more for a public meeting, I guess. I was just on it. I was like, wasn't sure how to go about all that. So this is the closest we could get to. So we were hoping that that could answer some of these questions for us.
Okay. Uh, thank you for your, for your questions or your concerns. Uh, first of all, for up to, uh, members of council, if they have any questions or anything they want to add. If not, then I'll go to staff.
Mayor Borough, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Uh, you mentioned that you've had an opportunity to meet with.
Yeah.
Maybe early today, today's recently anyway.
Yes.
Uh, were they able to provide you with, with any of the answers to some of these concerns? Cause some of these things are.
Not at that time, no.
Okay. Great. So, so even things like, uh, waste, waste disposal and, and that type of operation.
They they weren't specific about it, but said it would be like trucked off. Yes. So which means increased traffic.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Anyone else? All right, uh, councillor Brayton.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. We, as council, have never, we have never talked to Burn Bray about this. This is a first meeting, a public meeting, I guess. Uh, so I don't know. You're gonna have to get your answers from Burn Bray. Cause I don't think we don't, I don't want to better. I don't think anybody else does.
Roads is a council thing. Some road maintenance is a council thing. That wouldn't be a burn bread thing. And with their increased traffic. How are they going to be maintained?
This is, this is all new to us too.
Okay.
But we, we don't have the answers. I don't have the answers to give us.
All right.
So I don't know. I don't know whether.
This is why, yeah. Did, did everybody get a copy of the questions? They were supposed to be.
Yes, they're.
Supposed to, yeah.
They are.
So that, so that we sorry apologize. Yeah. And we did meet with the mayor there, uh, last weekend and you, you had mentioned that planning would be here hopefully to answer some of our questions.
Yeah, uh, we had hoped that, uh, that that would be the case. Our C A O may, uh, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, our C A O may be able to provide, uh, a bit more, uh, insight in, into that. And we could certainly get you a written response to your question around egg and world for sure. Um, so.
Okay, well. Yep, councillor Dowling.
Uh, my question is, uh, for the C A O, if, has, has, um, the township been approached in any way about, um, burn braids, weaker plans?
Um, through your chair, um, and we have not, but that's because they haven't come forward with an application if they needed to have an application. This would be dealt with through the planning process, um, and they potentially going to be able to develop the property without any kind of amendment to the official planner's own bylaws. So it's something that we wouldn't necessarily see. And that, that is our, is the township and council's only opportunity to, um, weigh into this is if there's a an application under the planning act.
Well, we haven't had that.
We have not had that in.
See, thank you.
Cause I was under the understanding that, um, they would be severing a portion of that property and that to me is something that would come through to the township at some point. Have you heard anything about that?
If they are going to sever, it's an application to the county council.
Right.
And they will seek, they will seek, uh, the township's input to that process. But it is a, a county council process for the severance.
So is there any burn brain people here tonight that are?
Yeah.
So maybe they could answer some of these questions.
They will. When they have the time. Yeah. Go ahead, councillor Oostroff.
Thank you, um. Similar, but thi- this is very new to me too. Um, in some ways I don't feel it's my concern who buys what piece of property. Businesses, businesses.
I agree.
Um, uh, my farm can expand once in a while and, and you buy or other people can buy or sell a house. And we don't need a neighbor's approval, but council. I mean, we have a planning department and, and if people want to buy and sell property, that doesn't go through the planning department. And there's a due process. If somebody needs a planning assistant or needs to, uh, make a request from planning, that's all takes time.
I mean, we have.
Hasn't been.
Yeah.
It hasn't been in front of our staff. It hasn't been in front of us. We're, we're sort of sitting here and.
Yeah, well, we're here because.
I can't bother.
Yeah, I mean, we probably know as much as you. I mean, we totally agree. Anybody can buy whatever they want, and I have no issue with that. I do have an issue with our roads and the increased traffic. I am really concerned about our water because especially with this past drought. You know, that's a, that's a huge concern.
But if I, I don't know.
Do you got ball?
Yeah, just, okay, I'll say, I say that th- those may be, I understand legitimate concerns.
Right.
But for me as a councillor today, I've had no need to think about those things yet because I don't even know if the property sold or bought. That's none of my business. And there's no official request for me to put thought into that.
Okay.
Other than, than your document here and your request. Now, I respect that as a resident. But I, I can't, I, I haven't have had no need to put thought into a road needs improvement because somebody's building something. That hasn't officially come before me yet. That's where I'm stuck.
Yes, we, I was so we're here because, you know, a neighbor said that Burn Bray had went around back in July to, to neighborhooding.
Okay, I didn't.
Most, most of the neighborhood around there did not speak with Burn Bray, two people off of line nine. So, you know, it was just a notification. It, it wasn't. There was no card left. So that residents could phone them back to say, hi, why were you here? What was happening? A flyer was not let, like nothing was left. To, so back in July had, you know, they talked to more people or left notes, left something. Maybe we would have brought it to more attention and, and spoke more with Burn Bray and before coming to you is maybe we wouldn't have never had to come to you. But because we just found out. And, and so we're trying to find out exactly what's happening, how it's going to affect us, exactly our, our town, our township, whatnot. So.
Yeah, councillor Renault.
Yeah.
Okay, it's my borough.
Well, uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So for the benefit of the member, the members of the public who are, who are here tonight, but we're not part of a, a dining room, uh, meeting that, that I had, I guess it was last weekend. Um, some of these questions and then some, uh, were posed to me at, at that time. So I'll just very briefly give everybody the same answers now that, that I gave then. I can understand the concern and, and dare I say some confusion around the zoning, uh, being rural and, you know, does that allow a quote unquote industrial scale farm and so on. Um, rural does allow agricultural, uh, activities. Uh, there are official definitions in the, in the zoning bylaw and until somebody comes to tell me otherwise with a, a planning, uh, credential. Uh, the farming activity that is being proposed by Burn Bray would be considered agricultural activity and that is allowed in a rural zone. So the property as of right enjoys the opportunity for that type of activity to be established on the, on the property. That's why, uh, my colleague said it's new to council. There's been no official submission because there's no need to change the, the zoning. Um, that doesn't mean that we won't follow up and, and try and, and help you to understand better why, why it doesn't fall as commercial or industrial. But as I say, my, my understanding, and I'm pretty confident in this, is that that activity is considered, uh, ag and ag is allowed within, uh, rural zones. Um, get roads fall, uh, as our purview. So, you know, your concerns around the, the amount of traffic, you know, how that'll affect the road bed and the safety and so on. That's something that our public works department would be interested in, in taking a look at and providing feedback to council on. If this is something that we're going to have to deal with in the future because of the increased traffic. Again, we have to consider jurisdiction and, and what we're allowed to, to do and why we're allowed to say yes or no is something. So just because we may have to do something with the road to upgrade it is not a reason that's acceptable for us to say no according to standard policies and procedures that are observed throughout the province. That just, that's going to be a responsibility for us to deal with as a result of, of this, uh, development. Wanting to know where the main entrance is? That's a fair question. I can't tell you because, you know, there's no official application.
That's, yeah, our, for council, some maybe for burn break.
The, um, the concerns around the well and the water tables and, and so on. Again, thinking about jurisdiction, that falls under what most people would know as the M O E. It's now called the N E C P. It's the Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks. Uh, and so again, that falls completely outside our purview. That's a question that we'll have to pose to, to the M O E, N E C P. Um, from, from my exposure, uh, to this over a number of years, I can tell you there is a threshold beyond which a water taking permit would be required, but below that threshold, there's no specific permit that's, that's required. It's it may be difficult to think about it this way, but it's like somebody buying a vacant piece of land and wanting to build a home. They have a right to drill a well. Uh, now, if, if their home is a mansion and they're gonna, you know, draw water above that threshold, they too, even privately, would be subject to a, a water taking permit. Uh, from what I understand, and I'm hoping that Burn Bray will be able to confirm this when they get up to the, to the podium. I don't believe that their operations that I know of, uh, meet that threshold. So I don't know that the, uh, M E C P is actually going to get involved with the issuance of, of a permit. I believe it's below that, that threshold. Um, asking for the wells to, to be cased down, I suspect that exceeds what may be actually required by, by policy and, and procedure. That doesn't mean that Burn Bray wouldn't necessarily willing, be willing to do that. So you know, that, that's not something that, that we can, uh, resolve. And again, I would hope to, to hear a little bit more detail about the nature of the waste disposal and the emissions from the, the operation to know, you know, is air quality and that type of thing, a, a concern? Just going by the fact that Burn Bray is not new to this township. We haven't had issues reported to us from the other operations. So for the time being, I'm extending them the benefit of the doubt. This will be the same as their other operations. I doubt there should be, you know, legitimate concerns about this one, but we can certainly go ahead and, and ask the questions. So I didn't want to take too much time, but I know that there are a lot of fresh faces here. And so I just wanted them to have the benefit of a really, you know, synopsis version of that two hour conversation we had around the.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor, for that fulsome, uh, report there. Councillor Renault?
Yes, um, there was something here about the waste. And if you just go by what, uh, nutrient management act states for all farming. Each animal is given an, an animal unit, a nutrient unit number. So a dairy cow or a beef cow is one animal unit. Takes a bunch of calves to make one animal unit. Takes a hundred and fifty chickens to make one animal unit.
Okay, okay.
Any new barn built? Doesn't matter whether you are an existing farmer or a new farmer. If you build a new barn, you have to do an animal, sorry, you have to do a nutrient management plan. So you have to have enough acres for whatever nutrients you are making to spread. So you have to have enough acres to spread that new tree on. Every farm that's over three hundred animal units or has a new barn has to do that. So there is rules in place.
That.
That takes care of that. So any one of these farms around here that have liquid manure would be doing that. It, yeah, twice a year, you'll have a little more traffic on the road with that manure being taken out. It's, yeah. It's not that big a deal.
It's not except that the roads are a disaster.
But that's something that's, it is right today. You don't know what's going to happen if we get this application.
Okay.
So, but there is rules in place that will protect you from spreading it all on one acre of property.
And where we wouldn't find those rules?
I have the link right here. I can, I can send it to staff and they can send it to you.
Bonus. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you councillor Renault. Councillor Brayton, uh, that one?
Yeah, I was, oh, you waited too long.
Okay. Sorry, buddy. All right, any, anyone else? On the table here? Um, so thank you very much for, for coming to the meeting and voicing your concerns. As you heard, some responses, uh, the mayor has met with you and, and several other people. Staff are well aware of the concerns as well. So, uh, and I'm sure Burnberry is going to answer some of these questions when it comes to the podium. So thank you for, for attending. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next one, four point two. That's, uh, Burberry Farms' potential development, Parker Cloud and Brian Bluesterman.
Good evening, uh, your worship on both councillors, uh, fellow delegates and guests. Uh, I am Parker Cloud. I am a project manager with Burberry Farms. I am here to speak on behalf of our proposed, uh, project in the Elizabeth Kitlee Township. Um, so like I mentioned, I'm a, I'm a project manager with Burberry. I have been, uh, full time with them for, for ten years on projects. I look after all of our farm construction across Canada. Um, I am born and raised in township. Uh, I reside a few kilometers south of, uh, our land farm.
Yeah, Brian Bluesterman, um, been with Burberry Farms for, uh, twenty four years full time. Uh, I'm a regional manager of the faulty operation. So Parker builds the barns, I manage them. So, uh, so I kind of take care of the chickens, uh, that, uh, in the inside barns. So. Um, so Burberry has purchased a parcel of land, um, which sits between Kitlee Line Nine, uh, and, and Mother Barnes. And it joins up on the north, northeast corner of the property, uh, to Johnson Road. Uh, so above is our map. Um, currently the, the yellow portion on, on the south, southern side, uh, we're looking at severing, uh, portion off back to the, uh, to the, to the residents of, of that, uh, of that house. Um, we are, and I should say that this is, this is new. It's a proposed project. I, I do say we haven't submitted any official uh, applications to the township yet as we, uh, burn brain internally decide on our what, what we're actually looking at, uh, doing and make sure we have all of our appropriate, uh, uh, planning in, in place. So we're, we're currently proposing building the base in, uh, design. Um, this would be three layer barns and a bullet barn. So a bullet barn is where the chicks are raised from day old to nineteen weeks. Burn Bray doesn't do any catching, uh, of, of the baby chicks. Each barn would be, uh, fifty eight thousand birds. Um, the proposed later would be in the center of the property. Um, this farm would be solely for the growing of, uh, the bullets and egg production. So all of the eggs would be palletized and, um, trucked to our land facility where they would be washed, um, graded, uh, and packaged. So this would be just, like I say, solely a farm operation. Um, we're currently looking at drilling four wells on the site. Uh, two wells would, would manage our bullet barn and a few wells would be for our land operation. Um, the, the only reason for four would be for redundancy, but we're dealing with animal welfare. Everything we do is redundant. So we do redundant heating systems, redundant wells, um, feed ventilation, um, that kind of stuff. So our estimated usage for the site would be about thirty five thousand liters a day. Um, I know that number, it can seem high, can seem low. Uh, just to put it in perspective, I know Eastern Ontario, um, is very big in, in cattle and dairy. So the, uh, that thirty five thousand, sorry, yeah, thirty five thousand liters a day, uh, compared to cattle would be two hundred and sixty head of cattle, uh, for dairy. Um, there is a threshold, uh, um, set out for wells. Um, it's, uh, from my understanding, it's fifty thousand liters a day that you would need a permit to take water from a single well. So this would be spread out over four wells. Um, we would work with the, uh, local licensed well driller. Um, these wells that we have on, on the typical farm, they're a six inch casing. They are a residential style well. Uh, we don't ask for any special provisions or depths or anything that go with it. This would be, uh, at the same depths that, uh, well driller would show up to drill for a house. Um, so we will rely on their policies and procedures, uh, and, and like, again, there seems to make sure the well is drilled appropriately. Uh, anything that poses a hazard to our well, um, or, or others would be corrected immediately. So that is part of the actual, um, regulations that if we are drilling. I know there was con- concern of some sulfur sulfates, um, leaching into the, into the well, um, that does have to be tested. And again, that is, that is regulated, that we cannot continue with that well until it's either fixed or decommissioned, uh, properly. Um, as far as the traffic goes, um, from, from the, the Burberry side of things, uh, like where the entrance is going to go. So currently we have Kitlee Line Nine and, and Johnson Road are two potential, uh, proposals for an entrance. Um, we have not submitted an application for an entrance permit yet. Um, but when we do that, we'll be followed with, uh, proper culvert sizing. Uh, we would follow the regulations that, uh, the township has set it, um, uh, for, for the sizing and then we'd be looking at stopping distances as well. Uh, make sure we rely on the, the proper engineers, uh, that are the roadways are with proper sightlines. Um, and again, this would be, um, through our engineer firm when we're ready to submit.
Um, so that's kind of on all the technical banking side of things. I'm just going to touch on, uh, on some of the environmental concerns that, that have been brought up, uh, with regards to waste disposal and health effects. So manure from the hens is all kept in covered storage buildings for each barn until it's ready to be sold and moved off site. Um, these manure storage buildings are designed and engineered for this specific purpose. Um, farmers buy our manure to use as soil supplements on their own land. buy our manure to use as soil supplements on their own land. And it is especially popular when organic farmers in Quebec. Um when that manure is transferred off site, uh it then falls under that farmer's nutrient management plan. So there's a nutrient transfer agreement that is signed and uh and then it's up to that farmer to handle that and spread that manure responsibly. As we're dealing with uh farming live animals, there's naturally going to be some farm orders that come with it, uh which in our experience is typically as as Counselor Renault uh alluded to, uh only one of the manures loaded uh in the trucks to be moved off site seasonally. Or when it's needed by uh local farmers to spread on their own land to help them grow their crops. Um we also do our best to be good stewards and neighbors in any community we operate in. As many of you know, we've been operating multiple hen barns at our farm in Lynn for many, many decades, which are two to three thousand feet away from many large scale, very expensive homes in the Lynn Lynn subdivision, uh as well as Lynn Public School, Elizabeth Town Kittle Fire Station and on and on and on. Um Parker and I recently took some time uh to spend with some concerned residents from Line Nine among barns and like the roads. They came to our office that is attached right to the front of one of our hen barns in Lynn to discuss some concerns they had and then some positive comments to us about the air quality on the farm when they visited us that day. Um I would like to quickly touch on just a few of the many benefits to increasing our local economy and how important local local agriculture can be. Uh increased agriculture and growing businesses, I feel, uh really help to increase local tax dollars, create local jobs and to help continue securing our own domestic food supply. Um there are many other local allied companies and businesses who benefit from construction and growing businesses such as this as well. Uh I'd like to elaborate a little bit, uh maybe on the job creation aspect, which I was personally affected by. Uh I grew up on a local family farm and I always had farming in my blood. It was uh my dream to farm. Um the family farm that I grew up on was not large enough to sustain multiple families living off of it. Uh I was fortunate enough to have been hired by the Hudson family at Burnberry twenty four years ago so that I could continue living out my passion for farming. Not every farm kid in other communities across Ontario have this unique and very fortunate opportunity available to them like I did. Uh Parker has a very similar story in mind along with many, many other employees who work at them. The Hudson's are a wonderful family to be employed with and Burnberry does many positive things in the communities that they operate in. Very proud to be a long term member of the Burnberry family, so.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Uh Parker and Ryan, so questions, we'll start with Counselor Deli.
Uh could you point on the map there um approximately where you think the barns might end up?
We're looking for some area kind of here central to uh the property.
Okay. Um I've had some questions from residents talking about school bus traffic on Johnson Road and how there's uh there's some blind spots and they were concerned about that.
Yep.
And so they were wondering, because the the um the word is that uh if this all goes ahead, that you were talking about accessing the barns from Johnson Road.
That that is possible. Again, we we're not quite uh for like prior enough along in our in our planning process, but but that is, that was a potential, yes.
So how would you address uh say some concerns about school bus safety and and things like that with your transport trucks?
So we would be uh we'd be working with the uh the guidelines set out by the Ministry of Transportation. That would be part of our uh our stopping, our sorry, uh stopping sightline distances, uh which would be provided from a third party engineering firm. So they would, they would take those standards and 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 go out and measure appropriately on the roads that that we are within within that threshold. Thank you.
Mayor Burrow?
Thank you uh through you, Mr. Chair. Um thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. Before I get on with with, there are three things I want to touch on. There's one thing that when I was describing my uh my dying chat with uh the the group of residents, I did cover with them the M D S, but I didn't mention that tonight. Can you just touch on, uh you know, Counselor Downey asked about the location of the barn. Can you just go over the process of making sure that the barns conform to that M D S requirement uh from from residents?
Yeah, for sure. So uh so the M D S is the minimum distance separation um that is required to be filled out when uh you're constructing, I believe, any type of property or any type of a structure. For for us to be agriculture, so we have to make sure we are following. Uh there there's an online calculator, you go in, you set all your, uh it basically lets you uh spits out the number of of how far away it'd be from residential houses. Uh in this case, it's nineteen hundred and fifty five feet is what our preliminary M D S uh has provided. Um so with with the barns in the center of that property, we would be well over two thousand feet away from any neighboring dwelling.
Okay. All right, thanks for that. So I just want to clarify the three things that I heard in in your presentation. Uh so so you talked about the transfer of nutrient responsibility and that type of thing. My understanding is that other than if you're farming some crops on the remainder of the land, the uh the output from your uh your facility is basically going to be stored and I'm assuming dried and that type of thing. So primarily that will be going ultimately off site, i- is that right? Otherwise, you wouldn't have been talking about a transfer of responsibility.
That's correct.
Okay. Um the the water taking, uh great visual picture of of translating that into the one of two hundred and sixty uh head of cattle. I just want to focus on the four wells for a moment and the thirty five thousand liters. So it's not that each well is going to be drawing thirty five thousand liters. It's your operation will draw thirty five thousand liters across the four wells where it's basically two pairs of redons.
That that's correct. So two two primary wells uh would take the thirty five thousand liters. The other two would be just sitting on on standby for for redundancy.
All right, fair enough, because I just wanted to get clear in my head, it wasn't thirty five thousand times two. It's it's just thirty five thousand for the operation.
Thirty five thousand for the site.
That's right. And and I just wanted to make sure that I heard correctly, each barn fifty thousand?
Fifty eight thousand per barn, that's correct.
Okay, yeah. All right, thanks for your mention.
Anyone else? All right, uh well, thank you, uh Parker and uh Brian.
Question I'm hiding back there, sorry, it's fifty eight thousand per barn?
That's correct, yes.
So that that's well over three hundred nutrient units per barn, or forty eight thousand would be.
So three hundred will be the threshold, anything over three hundred you would have to employ a nutrient.
And then I was gonna say, then you would have the, that is all triggered, so then that.
Sure does.
I don't, sorry, yeah. So what it sounds like to me, if you think about what Counselor Renault was saying, there are things in place to make sure all the rules are followed and that's triggered at that three hundred nutrient or animal unit, which each barn is over. So we can be assured that, yes, we follow all the steps.
That that is, that is correct, yes.
If then, just one more question, the facility, guys, I don't know if it's Cleefield or Hanover, Manitoba, is this about the same size, like what you're doing here or?
Uh what would we have?
Would that one be?
Cleef- Cleefield will be similar. That would be similar in size.
Right.
That's correct.
Because like at the Lynn location, there's how many barns, like ish?
There's still eight, 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 eight barns, eight, eight.
Right, so eight there and then four potential new ones. And so this is slightly bigger. Like if you counted both of these, it would be bigger than the one at Cleefield, yeah.
Oh, yes, for sure. We have other farming operations.
The amount of water, sorry, it's how many gallons, or was that so?
Thirty five thousand liters.
Daily, so yes, then bigger than the national, okay, thanks.
Mayor Burrow, just a a quick follow up. So um a number of us, I guess, you'd probably be familiar with the um the operation that you have. It's a I believe, I believe it's a four barn operation on the actual Burnberry Road. So relative to to that facility, would this be twice as large, about the same size, just so that we can, you know, um a relative picture?
Yeah, so so Lynn's an interesting setup, um and maybe I've addressed that too. So so Lynn is set up at the the front part, uh would be our land operation, a back would be a bullet operation, um both separated by distance. Don't get too technical, but anyway, the the distance is for disease control. Um we are starting to move move away from that. A site like this, you'd have a bullet barn um eh off to the side, that's why it would need its own well. Then there'd be a distance in between between the layer barns. So this is kind of a new model. So to compare it to to Lynn, um uh as far as direct operations, it doesn't quite match, but what you would see off Burnberry Road, um I believe, yeah, there's four barns in a row there. I would say that would be an equivalent vis- visualization of of a barn size and 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 the spread of what it's gonna look like.
Okay, yeah, it just helps with sort of a thumbnail.
Yes, sorry.
Okay, all right. But but so so on a per barn basis, these barns are going to be, you know, optimized basically the same footprint per barn as the per barn footprint that we see on on Burnberry Road.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, all right, that that helps me in, thanks.
Counselor Houstrom?
Thank you, I don't know if this pertinent or not, but I'm curious. Um with these barns, what kind of uh hydro or power usage will there be needed? And is that gonna have to change anything from Ontario Hydro's perspective?
Yes, um the the power requirements aren't um aren't as demanding, I guess, as you would as you would think, but we would need a three phase upgrade um to that to that line um from twenty nine to uh to this parcel of land. Uh so that has already been spoken with with Hydro. Um that is actually uh one of the bigger deciding factors, actually, purchasing land in Ontario is finding appropriate power through supply side. So um yes, it would be a three phase line. Um as far as the actual capacity, it's it's not a great capacity, it's just that three phase is important.
Right, yeah.
Just Counselor Deli, not follow up? Yeah, just a little longer, go ahead.
Is there any uh plan for solar uh production at the facility?
Um Burnberry has made a big commitment to sustainability. Um if we are uh I would, we don't know, we're too early in this age. I wish I, you know, uh I I'm gonna say yes, we're gonna look into it. Um that is definitely dependent on if Hydro is gonna give us um the availability to put put power back in. Uh we've been, it's been pretty tough getting capacity on the line, not only to get power, but to give power, so. Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay.
Counselor Deli?
So do you have a rough estimate um or say truck traffic on an average day? That that's one question. And the second question would be um how many employees would be required at a site like that?
Um yeah, well, I'll comment on the construction side. I and I just want to be clear, um just on construction, yes, uh if we if we do go ahead and we do get the approvals and and Burnberry is going ahead with this project, um like any construction site, we will see a lot of a lot of dump trucks, we'll see, you know, a lot of construction traffic uh in in that area. Um so that will be a busy, it'll be a bit of a two year project um as far as uh construction goes. Maybe operation, Brian?
Yeah, operationally, uh we probably have, I would say, three feed deliveries per week um to keep feed delivered to the chickens and two egg pickups a week. And as far as operational for employees, um it would be anywhere between four to eight employees. And then also a flock turnaround time, so when it's time, those forty eight employees can't kind of move all all the chickens in in a couple of days themselves. Uh so we have uh we have, we will supply supplemental labor from our from our Lynn site um for, yeah, those three times a year on the flock, let's change it.
So only about three transports a week, outs, the rest are basically?
Three, three, three of feed coming in, two of eggs going out.
Okay, and then how often does the uh does the manure get shipped out?
Uh it depends, but uh most other farms typically it's spring and fall.
Oh, twice a year?
Twice a year, so m- most farmers want it when they can apply it on the land. Right, so they want to bring it to the land when they want, when they want to spread it, so. Yeah, not all the time, but but that's typical of most operations that that that's that's what they want. Sometimes in the summertime, if they had wheat crop, maybe, and then they harvested the wheat in August, they would want it prior to fall, but most times it would be spring and fall.
And then, so you were talking about two thousands feet of separation. So is there ventilation equipment that runs that you can hear from two thousand feet away?
I I would say no, but the our fans are quite efficient. Um if you do hear noise, um that's leading towards inefficiency, so. Um everything's well maintained and and, you know, very high efficient these days.
Okay, Counselor Renault?
Yes, and if you've been around the barns at at Burnberry, you don't hear and you don't smell. So, um that will help you by moving or putting new barns up there. That's gonna help you with the avian flu if there was ever an outbreak in Lynn. These birds probably or maybe would not be affected.
Well, that's the
That's the hope.
That's the, that's the, that's one of the main reasons for sure, is to is to mitigate risk, yes. Absolutely, and even if one of the seeds get put on the lead worse as the years go on, so.
Good. Anyone else?
No.
All right, well, thank you, uh Counselor Brayton, for that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say that that Burnberry, I live within a mile of three barns. And uh I wouldn't say once a year, I'd say maybe every three years, uh you might get a whiff. But I don't even know they're there. Uh with no noise, chicken noise or whatever when you go by, and I'm, I uh I I'm not a chicken eater, I I don't mind the soup. But uh I, chicken is not my main deal, but if, anyway, uh I don't think that the people will uh when when it's it's all said and done, you have the the uh barns up, other than the odd truck going by, you, they will not know whether uh there's a chicken burn there or what. So like you've been good corporate neighbors to the to the residents of the township, so like, I I can vouch for for and I've lived there for forty five years, so I, I know I'm not, so, thank you, boys.
Yes, thank you too.
Yes. All right, thank you, Parker and uh Brian for the presentation and answering uh as much as you could, the other questions were asked by the concerned. Just hold on, just hold on.
Chair.
Hold on. And uh and a- as as the other delegation, staff as well, where are the questions? As you also heard, there's no application uh but forward uh to the municipality yet. Uh so this is a clear preliminary uh discussion. And um not that we will open this up to a a full debate, but if you do have a question, I'll entertain a question. Uh but please uh state your name and your address, please, uh if you're asking a question. Question. Point one?
I don't live near there, but I've just heard in the news that Winchester has run out of water. What plans do you have if you run out of water back there? Do you have any backup plans, Burnberry?
Yeah, uh currently at the time, um no, we we would follow the uh uh you know, the best guidance from our our well drillers to 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 make sure we are drilling appropriately. Um whether there there's uh, I'm I'm not a well driller, I I won't, I won't say I I'm experienced in it at all just from my questions uh with with our well driller. Um you can hit a totally different aquifer uh by moving a well five feet. So you can have wells side by side, you can hit different aquifers and different different parcels of of water underground, so.
But the question was, do you have a backup? Like Winchester also been down there and there's a whole bunch of people living in that town and they ran out of water. Because of the dying year.
There currently isn't, there would be no no backup plan. At at this time, we're we're too early in the stages of project, too.
Sometimes the truck water keeps getting out of the slot.
What about the population living in L N I?
Okay. Uh any other questions? Yes, uh please stand up and your name.
I'm not flying, I, I've heard a lot of comments about uh not applying priorities being around the barns.
Oh, okay, like you, a- around around the lane, the lane area?
I'll go, any of the the chicken farms, I've heard there's increases the coyote population by a large number.
Um I I don't know if I have much to comment, I I can see maybe, maybe uh how livestock outside, um but but that would wouldn't be at our farm, like all, that would all be contained uh and handled appropriately. So uh I don't know what what they would be uh looking for, I guess, at our our farms.
Any other questions? Good, St. Luke, go ahead. Name, name and address, please.
My name is Michael Mayton and I live at one one nine four six Rock Springs Road. Um this one is supposed to start at seven, according to the paper. The one.
So just just for clarification, uh the committee, the whole meetings for council start at six o'clock and that uh information you have in your hands, sir, did not come from the municipality, so I don't, not sure who did that for you, but um anyways, our meetings start at six, but go ahead and ask your question.
Anyways, you're talking about trucking around the roads, you're around your place, is it gravel roads or what is it?
Yes, uh be both.
And uh how much traffic or transport traffic are you looking at? Increased with your chicken farm, I guess, of the news?
That's correct, yeah, so uh well, we. That's correct, yeah, so uh well, we uh
Yeah, it would be roughly three, three trucks of feed per week, uh two trucks of eggs.
Right, okay, so that stays within the main uh uh the limitations in spring of uh springtime with the load restrictions on gravel roads?
Uh so agriculture would be exempt for supplying the the well by birds, yeah.
And uh
Which would fall under, like I said, the appropriate restrictions.
And any upgrades to their road structure or continuous increase in maintenance to that road, is that borne by you, or is it gonna be borne by the taxpayers like us?
That would be, that'd be a conversation with with the township, but um my understanding is we're we're only uh we maintain the private property that we would own.
Right. So for the township, how many times do you grade that road in, the roads around that area and things like that would be a consideration because grading them up is cost manpower and time, and also aggregates. Right, so if you have to do it instead of once a year, you have to do it four or five times a year, that puts a lot of our taxes on. Right, it's an additional burden on us.
Yeah.
Okay. Um so that's probably something you may wanna look into.
Good, thank you for your question.
Thank you, please.
Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Margaret, it's my five eighty-nine Mother Barns Road. And I've had a concern for many years, I've called um Elizabeth Township uh because I guess that's they look after our part of the road from twenty-nine to Lake Alloida. And then from Lake Alloida over to um the the to the County Road Five is looked after Athens, and from County Road Five over to um forty-two is looked after by Reno Lakes. So I have had had concerns, I have spoken to people from Elizabeth Town, because that's the route that I was to take. And I've also contacted Athens, and at that time Athens told me that in order um the road was can't be paved because Elizabeth Township didn't wanna pay their portion. But it's an ongoing concern, I mean, last week they were just down there and they graded the road, and they and whoever I spoke to at the Elizabeth Town, he told me that it's cheaper to grade the road than it is paving. Well, the road was was graded last week, it needs to be graded again.
Yeah, yeah.
At right, as soon as there's a rainfall, it's back to puddles again. So, and you know, that's manpower. And I'm I'm in Athens Township, I pay my taxes, but Elizabeth Township doesn't want, didn't wanna pay their portion at that time when it was addressed to them. So this is something that if this goes ahead, that they've got to look at paving part of that road at least, at least to Johnson Road or even further. The whole road, you might as well do it, because the whole road is just gravel. They put new gravel this year, it's it's it hasn't made any difference at all. It was a waste of gravel money. So the these types of things are gonna have to be looked into as well. Um if this proposal goes ahead, because I'm sure that um the Mother Barns Road's gonna be used to as well from twenty-nine to Johnson Road. So that's something that needs to be looked into if this, if this is to go ahead. That the roads need to be better maintained, because they need to come down tomorrow and grade the road, like a- after a rainfall. Any rainfalls, they, you might as well bring, send the grader down the next day. And the thing that is is at the end of the road at twenty-nine, there's like a great big puddle, I'm surprised that somebody hasn't taken out the the suspension in the cars, and even that again by Lake Alloida is the same thing, so. The, you know, I think the roads, people need to keep monitoring this after rainfalls, because it's an ongoing issue, and if this goes ahead, I'm sure that trucks will be using Mother Barns Road as well, so. I appreciate that, thanks.
Thank you for your question, and uh I see staff, uh the CEO is sitting there uh writing diligently uh running out of ink there, but uh he's he's making his notes to go back to public works with, so thank you. Any other questions?
There's a bunch of people back here that haven't, uh some of them probably do have questions, but we've got a limited space, and it's hard for them to come up and see.
All right, well.
You guys have a question, go forward.
Is there anyone out there?
Everybody has a question, if you have any question.
Yes, ma'am?
I just wonder, what time did it start? Because my notice said seven o'clock.
So your notice is not from the municipality, our our committee, the whole meeting started at six. Okay, I'm sorry about that, but that's, that information was sent out there, it was not from the township.
Okay.
Sorry about that. No questions out there?
Well, I have a question, I just got here, is this still pertaining to the chicken farm or?
It is, uh please record your name, name and your address, sir.
Okay, so Ray Corden, uh fourteen seventy-seven County Road Eight Toledo. Um my question is, I heard that this is a factory farm. I'm disagreeing with that, I'd like to know what qualifications people have, what is too big to satisfy them, I'm a cattle farmer, am I allowed to grow my herd bigger, or are they gonna try and rebuttal me on on growing my herd so I can make some money?
Go ahead, Mayor, okay, you have your notes there, probably, go ahead.
So so uh last weekend I had a meeting around a dining room table with some some uh concerned citizens, and the number one topic was around that how is it that a commercial operation is allowed to be established on this property, so it's very similar to your question. So the the answer, I'm not a professional planner, we're gonna get the the official answer from our planning department, but I'm I'm pretty confident what I'm gonna say. The the operation is considered an agricultural operation, just like yours would be. And the rural zoning allows as as one of the list, one of the many items in the list of allowed uses on rural zoning is agriculture uh as an operation, so they as a right can do this without applying for a re-own. I don't know how many acres you have and how many head of cattle you have and that type of thing, it wouldn't be the zoning that would stop you from expanding, it would be things like your nutrient management plan
Mm-hmm.
uh and and those types of things, so there are all kinds of other rules and policies that apply to this as well. What we've heard from them this evening indicates to us that it conforms with all those rules and policies, just because of the the size. So so I'm gonna go out on a limb and say that unless there's some rule or policy that growing your herd would violate, certainly the township has has no interest in stopping you from doing your thing any more than we have in stopping Burn Bray from from doing theirs.
So I'm not so worried about township, I'm just worried about, you know, people out in, living in the country that don't have farms or whatever
Right.
start squawking that I'm getting too big for their satisfaction.
Yeah, and so one of the things that I explained to the to the small group around the dining room table was that our job is to make sure that the rules are applied fairly.
Yeah.
And so we don't get involved in the sale of properties, just because a neighbor doesn't want that property to be sold, that's not for us to decide, that's a private market issue. And and be careful what you wish for, because if if you convince the council to put some kind of bylaw in place, although I don't know that it would actually hold up to legal challenge, but if we were able to to do something where we could intervene in some sales and so on, then what about the neighbor that doesn't want you to add a garage to your home and those types of things, so there's another side to every sword. Uh and and we're not interested in getting into those types of of situations, our job is simply to administer the fair application of the rules that are in in place within our jurisdiction. Things like water drawing uh and nutrient management and that type of thing, that's not within our jurisdiction, those rules are are handed to us for us to play a role in enforcing, but it's not for us to to actually oversee.
Yeah, but there's all rules and boundaries setbacks and everything like that, they're all in place already.
Yeah.
Which I'm sure these guys were gonna adhere to one hundred percent.
Yeah.
They're like, I don't see an issue, I mean, I'm glad the farmers are building out in the country and not building this big, big chicken farm in the middle of the city.
Yeah.
It belongs in the country.
Yeah, so so unfortunately, I understand about the confusion of the of the timing and so on, and it's just, but so you weren't here to to hear all of the the conversation, but I I think I'm pretty confident, speaking for council, when I say this council has no interest in in stopping expansion of of agricultural operations, nor would we have an interest in allowing a home to be built in violation of those distances to create problems for farms, and you know, like I say, the 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 number one thing to remember is that that we want to just fairly apply the rules to everybody, doesn't matter who came first and 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 you know, who approached us first or how they're going about it, the rules are the rules, and we just need to apply it.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm three thirty-five Kitten Line Nine. Um you have not
Your name, please?
Rhonda Sealy. I have not decided where the entrance will be, whether it's off of Line Nine or whether it's off of Mother Barns Road.
Uh that's that's correct, yeah, we there, there's there's no application in yet to the township. Um as as we still go through planning internally. Um but when we do go through the planning process, there are, there's an entrance permit we have to submit, there's there's sightline distances we will have to adhere to, uh as well as get acceptance from from the the township uh to accept that permit.
So will the township then go and look at the best viable option? Whether Line Nine or Mother Barns? Because on our side, we have a lot of large farm machinery going up and down, there's a blind hill versus, and then the world's not that wide for two for transport plus a large farm equipment that's going up and down all the time.
Good, uh CEO, could you uh answer that or try it?
Uh thank you, Chair, um well, uh Burn Bray will be getting an engineer to, a transport engineer to look at the uh requirements within legislation, and that's how they will choose their location, it'll have to conform to uh legislation and the township, as long as it's conforming to legislation. Uh we we, you know, we're not going to have a a say necessarily where it goes.
All right, any other questions?
You did say it was gonna be off either Johnson Road or Nine.
Uh that's correct, but well, yes, that's that's correct, we uh at this point, yes, sir, very good point, um at this point, we're looking to sever it off, sorry, and that was at the start of uh meeting, we were looking to sever it off uh on the south part of the property. So we will have any uh any property on Mother Barns. So we will have uh a lot of property, the property will block off against uh Kitty Line Nine and Johnson Road. Um which which at, at this point, we haven't decided whether it's gonna be Johnson Road or Kitty Line Nine, where we spent our application. Yeah, thank you.
Good. Anyone else? One wants? Why are you so impressed? What's the question, ma'am?
I think it's already been addressed, I have been, I'm wrong, um just in terms of owner control, has that been brought up?
Go ahead, Ryan.
I apologize, it's already been addressed.
Okay. Uh no problem.
Invite her to Lynn.
Yeah. Uh yeah, with with regards to owner control, uh manure from the hens is kept in covered manure storage buildings for each barn. Um until it's ready to be sold and moved off-site. Uh these manure storage buildings are designed and engineered for this specific purpose of of housing manure. Um farmers buy our manure and use it as a soil supplement on their own land, and it's it's especially popular for organic farmers in Quebec. Um as we're dealing with farming, live animals are usually regular farm owners that tell them to farm me, um which in our experience is typically only when the manure is loaded onto trailers to be transported off-farm. Not on kind of a daily operational basis, um and that's that typically happens uh seasonally when crops come off the field or just before crops are being planted, so most of the times uh spring or fall, um yeah, and then I touched on our operation in Lynn, we're we're within two to three thousand feet of of many multimillion-dollar homes, the Lynn subdivision, Lynn Public School, uh Lynn Fire Station, many other establishments within Lynn, we're two, three thousand feet away from all those uh homes and and establishments, so. Um and uh yeah, we do our very best to be good stewards of neighbors in the community that we operate in, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we never, never dump on the property around us, correct? We never dump the manures around us. It's always carried away.
It's 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 sold to to farmers.
Correct.
Well, some some local, but most of it, most of it from our Lynn site, a a large portion of it gets uh is 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 sold into Quebec.
Correct, so. Twice a year, you're gonna clean your barns, is it twice a year?
Yeah, typically.
I told people from Lynn, it's twice a year they get the smell.
Yeah, 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 that that would, that would be fairly typical, because those farmers don't wanna take it in January or July, right?
So what happens when you're replacing the hens? Are we getting like the barns opened right up, then you're you're cleaning out the barns? And then you replace the hens, is it every six months or?
No, no, it's typically uh every twelve to uh to fifteen months, the barns will be uh will be cleaned out, and those hens uh from our territorial operations, uh they go for further processing.
Right.
So, yeah.
Okay. Yes, ma'am? Your name and address, please?
Yes, my name's Donna Orr, and I live at um Line Eight Kitley. What happens with the deceased birds? What do you do with those?
Uh so we uh we have invested composters. So maybe you went to a vessel composter and uh and you get composted uh as a soil.
And what happens with the remains?
They're they're, it'd be composted, it would come out as organic matter. It would come out as, exactly, the soil, and if you would, if you look at a pile of it, you wouldn't quite know the difference between that and 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 soil. For that way.
Okay. Follow up, ma'am? No? Any other questions?
Uh yeah, uh Danny Hallier, uh one zero zero five three, and Row twenty-nine. I don't know, my schedule said it was at seven o'clock, too, so maybe this question's been asked, but I just wanna know about depreciation in our homes. Like who's gonna wanna live by this? But your home's gonna depreciate for sure, right?
Yeah.
No. Councilor, no, go ahead and answer that.
I would suggest that anyone in Lynn could say no, their home has not appreciated in value. They're they're within two thousand feet of
A million dollar.
Million dollar homes.
Yeah. We got a management decision right there.
Which, yeah, right there. Are you one of those? Well, it's pretty true.
Yeah.
It's a pretty true.
Any other questions there, Dan? Any questions? Once? Twice? Thank you very much for uh for coming out and listening to these questions and their concerns. And as you've already heard, uh there has not been an application submitted to the township yet. So thank you. Good morning. Thank you, Parker and Brian, thanks. Moving on to uh number five. I'll uh give a few minutes, but if anybody wants to leave, we'll be moving on. So I'm gonna get around here. When I started the meeting, I was looking at my There are number five, uh staff reports, corporate services, administration, financing, government, five point one. Uh eight twenty-five dash fifty-six, bylaw enforcement options. Can I get a mover and a seconder to uh get that on the floor, councilor, who's the office, second to by councilor Eady, CEO, you wanna take notes?
Check, I think you're doing the motions.
Yeah. Want to close this door?
Yes.
Okay. All right, uh we got the uh report on the floor, and I'll ask our CEO if he has anything else, if he wants to add to his report.
Um if you don't mind, I wouldn't mind taking a little bit of time just to sort of go through this, this was Um, if you don't mind, I wouldn't mind taking a little bit of time just to sort of go through this. This was one of the items that was in strategic plans, so. Um, to, uh, wanna make sure that we, um, uh, we give enough attention to this, so. I mean, it was kind of an interesting report for me to write. Um, I had expected to bring this to to committee in October. But as I started sort of peeling back the onion and finding more and more information, I needed a little bit more time. So in two thousand and eight, uh, the township signed an agreement with the Frontenac Municipal Law Enforcement to provide bylaw enforcement services to the township. The agreement was to be concluded in October two thousand and ten. Um, however, the agreement was never extended nor was it amended. Um, however, Frontenac has continued to provide bylaw enforcement services since this time. In June twenty, uh, nine, Frontenac were also appointed as animal control officers for the township. In twenty twenty-one, staff reviewed township's pound services and recommended awarding. Uh, Sally Mellon, a one-year contract to provide pound and animal control services. Um, there was an agreement which was signed in January first, twenty twenty-one, um, to establish a pounds, uh, pound keeper and an animal control officer. Which was to, uh, Sally Mellon. Uh, the agreement permitted, uh, this to be the one year to be extended to five years past the initial year. Um, and at this stage, Frontenac stopped providing animal control services. In September twenty twenty-three, the township recruited administrator and bylaw enforcement coordinator. Um, thirty percent of this role were, uh, was for bylaw enforcement, which included overseeing the contracts. Receiving complaints and coordinating the activities of the bylaw enforcement officers. Um, the position has not been stacked since September twenty twenty-four. In July twenty twenty-four, uh, the township issued an RFP for bylaw enforcement services. At the close of this period, only one response was received. After being evaluated by staff, it was determined that this proposal did not meet the minimum requirements of the tender and no further RFPs were being issued. Frontenac have provided details of their enforcement activities from twenty twelve to twenty twenty-four. Um, it should be noted that this represents actions or activities that they that they undertook, not necessarily in specific cases. So there may have been some, uh, case where they may have had two or three activities, a dog bite, they may have actually gone and investigated. They may have gone and sought the complaint, and they may have gone to court to find something. Over the twelve years, there were eight hundred and fifty-five enforcement activities undertaken with an average or an average of sixty-five activities per year. From twenty twelve to twenty twenty, much of our activity was actually around animal control. Since twenty twenty-one, uh, when this shifted over to Sally Mellon, uh, they focused more on property-related bylaw infractions. Um, though they were still undertaking some activities such as the Dog Owners Liability Act, which is for dog bites. Um, Sally has also provided summaries for pound, uh, pound and animal control activities in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, and twenty twenty-five. Um, in the past two years, the budget for bylaw enforcement has been twelve thousand dollars for the budget for, um, bylaw enforcement, sorry. And twenty thousand for animal control, so that was in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. Um, actual expenditures for the contracted services and bylaw enforcement have ranged from nine thousand seven, nine thousand seventy-five dollars to thirteen thousand nine hundred and twelve. Or an average of, um, just under twelve thousand per year. Animal control expenditures have ranged from ten thousand one seventy to seventeen thousand six ninety-five, an average of fifteen thousand two hundred per year. Um, though since twenty twenty-one, this has obviously gone up with the new contract and there's been an average of about sixteen thousand two hundred and twenty-five. Staff also reached out to other area municipalities to see how they were conducting bylaw enforcement. Um, it was a combination of third-party contractors such as, um, uh, Frontenac. Uh, to internal staff that also held other duties, um, to full-time bylaw enforcement officers. Um, we also did ask for where they had full-time bylaw enforcement officers, um, what they were paying. The pay ranged from thirty-one dollars and sixty cents per hour to thirty-six dollars and eighty-five cents per hour. So staff have actually put forward five options for council to consider. Um, one which is continuing to use both Frontenac and Sally Mellon in order to do bylaw animal control enforcement. Uh, if this is the option that council would, uh, like to go down or like to see us, um, uh, put into the budget. Um, this would really probably need a new contract for Frontenac. But also, um, where we can see some clear deliverables, their performance metrics. Um, and maybe some vary between the two roles between animal control and 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 bylaw enforcement. Uh, there does seem to be a little bit of a bummer map between the two, um, two organizations. Um, so the second option was to look at a private contractor. In Eversburg Cardinal, they have a private contractor who comes in and does. Uh, ten hours per week. Um, the hourly rate is sort of comparable to what Frontenac is charging. Um, but they have, um, a a set rate for any travel. Um, they would also require some capital costs upfront, so they would require some, uh, uh, laptop, a cell phone, uh, clothing, um, some security devices as well for themselves. Option three would be to create a full-time position internally, so, um, within the the township to have our own bylaw enforcement person. Um, we haven't completely developed a business case, um, but we would expect, given some of the salary ranges that we saw. Uh, from other area municipalities, that salary and benefits would be about maybe one thousand five hundred per year. Um, there would also be some annual operating costs between, uh, three thirty thousand and fifty thousand per year. Um, and then some capital costs for equipments, um, and a vehicle. Option four would be to reissue the RFP and to, um, go back out to the marketplace and see if we could, uh, uh, get any more, uh, responses. And then option five would be to look at entering a partnership with some of the other area municipalities. This could be, um, with, um, one that already has an existing full-time bylaw enforcement officer and seeing if they can cover for, um, the township. Um, or could be looking at some of those others that have third-party, uh, delivery services and seeing if we could jointly. Um, uh, combine into to having a, uh, full-time service, uh, between the two. Um, it should be noted that, um, apart from option three, which is having an internal person, uh, within the, the, sorry, our bylaw enforcement officer. Um, there really is a need for some, uh, coordinated bylaw enforcement support. That's probably been one of the big. Uh, gaps that we've seen where we don't have somebody internally who's necessarily responsible for taking those. Uh, inquiries and making sure that they get passed on to Frontenac bylaw or to to Sally and making sure that they're being followed up with. Is currently following to to another member of staff that they've got other duties. Um, um, and I think that, um, it could be important for us to make sure that if we're going to do any of those options, that we have some kind of support. Internally and there are a bunch of coordinated. I think that's it for me. Uh, I'm sure you'll have lots of questions. All right, I'm happy to answer.
Good, thank you. Before I open it up to the floor of the committee, I'm just gonna read the recommendation, then we can have the full discussion. So the recommendation of this report is that the committee either receive report eight twenty-five sixty-six bylaw enforcement options. And that the committee, the whole recommended council, which option for bylaw enforcement activities. To include in a twenty twenty-six budget. That's the recommendation, and now I'll open it up. As you heard from our CEO, there are several options to discuss. So, Mayor Burrow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'm just gonna make my initial contribution, uh, brief, but I hope, uh, it has some some value. Sometimes when narrowing down a list of what to do, it's easier to first eliminate what you don't want to do, because that goes relatively quickly. For me personally, I want to thank our C A O for a comprehensive report. There's lots of good information here. Um, option three doesn't seem to pass the sniff test, uh, for me. I had hopes for it. But when I compare, you know, that range of a hundred and eighty-six thousand to two hundred and twenty-one thousand projected, uh, cost, not including, uh, animal control. And I compare that to our overall expenditures over the last fifteen years of, you know, thirty thousand a year. I just can't justify, yes, I'd like to see some better response times and, uh, and and some better service levels, uh, for our residents. I can't justify that type of increase in anything with access. So I'm gonna suggest that we take option three off the list of consideration. And then, you know, build on a smaller list. That's just my thought.
Okay, thank you. Counselor, down.
The private contractor option, uh. That you mentioned where they would possibly come in for ten hours a week, would that, uh. Would that be the same as having one of our staff, uh. Dedicate time. To the problems? Like, because that seems to be a reoccurring theme in here. Is that, uh. We're short somebody on at the moment to be able to deal with. Uh, I'm not sure what they deal with. Just like, just keeping track of each call. I'm not quite clear, but would the private contractor? Be able to deal with that?
Um, through you, Chair. Um, so the intent of the private contractors, they are going out and doing enforcement. They're actually going out to properties. They're going out to do investigations. They're actually undertaking the investigation as opposed to being the one to sit here and. Take the inquiry and, uh, make sure that it's being, um, administrated within the organization, so. Their time is best served, given the experience they have and given that they are a P A O officer, in actually going out and doing the enforcement. So, um, for example. Um, somebody's property is, uh, not, it doesn't meet the property standards by law. They'll go out, they'll do an investigation. They'll take pictures, uh, they'll come back and they'll tell staff that, yes, it didn't meet the the bylaw. You need to next, uh, step would be to send them a letter to, uh, conform. The staff will send a letter out. Um, they may go and do a repeat investigation to see that changes have been made. If not, they may have to put. Um, a fine against the property and they will go into the court system. Um, one of the, uh, important parts of. Frontenac service, and this is that they're P A O officers, so they can actually go to court and file. Um, fines through the court system. Um, the one of the reasons that Sally isn't, so she can't do dog bites. Because she isn't a P A O officer, so she can't actually write a fine and enter through the court system with that.
Yeah, I was trying to, in my head, figure out what the advantage, um. Over Frontenac would be to go with private contractor. That's why I was asking that question, because. From what I understand, Frontenac has been doing. Um, good work for all these years.
Do you want to comment on that or?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Yeah, just comment, then I'll counsel.
So I I I. I hope, uh, to make that one of, uh, discussion helpful. I think there's, um, there's a distance challenge for the Frontenac. That that because they're based out of Kingston, my understanding, uh, head office. Sometimes if there's, if there's a timely issue, it's a challenge for them to to respond. So one of the advantages of a of a private contractor that's more local may be that will deliver a better level of service for similar costs. To the to the residents, so that's one thing to to consider. But I don't think we had a real problem with the quality of it, per se. It's just some of the logistics, so I'll go with that.
Go ahead, Derek. Thank you, uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, and I think. One of the intentions is if we choose to stick with, uh, Frontenac, um, or even if it's a private contractor. Is to make sure that there's some performance metrics involved in the in the in the contracts and that hasn't really existed, so. Set some standards. You know, if we give you a a complaint, we expect it to be investigated within twenty-four, forty-eight hours. So they understand what our expectation is as opposed to, um, it's just, okay, yes, we're gonna go and enforce our bylaws, but there's really no. Metrics, really no, uh, performance that we can judge. And so I think either for either of those options, I think. Having some kind of performance, uh, metrics in the contract would be beneficial.
Yeah, Counselor, no. Oh, you have follow-up there, Ned?
The follow-up is, um. The RFP that was put out was taken by three people, but only one person, one company put a bid in.
Yes.
So there's not a lot of interest for this type of service.
Um, through you, Chair, it it's it was surprising that we didn't get, um, at least. Frontenac, um, coming back. They they weren't, uh, the one that bid. It was a firm out of, um, out of Ottawa. Um, and they were more of a security firm than they were bylaw enforcement, so they really didn't have a good. Match to what we were expecting, uh, from the contract. Um. Hard to compare in terms of their costs. I looked at, um. The actual bid that came in, um, they were looking at project management, um, uh, consulting services at fifty-five dollars an hour. And their bylaw enforcement services were thirty-seven, uh, dollars an hour regular and forty-two dollars an hour on statutory holidays. But the benefit was that they didn't try, they didn't charge any travel time. Um, but that was sort of the area they were in in terms of cost.
Counselor, no.
Yeah, I I'm looking at the private contractor and trying to figure out, if I'm a private contractor, I mean, if I hire one for the farm. I expect him to come with his tools. If he doesn't come with his own tools, you don't hire him. Why would we have to provide them? With tools to do a job that they're contracting to do? They should have their own tools. They should have a laptop, they should have their cell phone, they should have their Kevlar vest. They should have that, if that's the line of work they're in. I'm confused.
Through you, Chair, this is. The communication with them was that that's what they were being provided in the other township. And that's what their expectation would be for, um, for providing the same service here.
Nelson, right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I. We were having a bit of problem with the. With, uh, people from Kingston not not being. Available when we think they are. How do you think that the people from Ottawa are gonna be any better? Like, I don't see why we'd even be thinking of anybody from Ottawa. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Mayor Burrow.
Just to 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 make a a point on that. The the people, the one and only response that we got from our request for proposals was from Ottawa. And we didn't end up going with them. So there's nothing in the report here that suggests that we're even considering going with someone in Ottawa.
Yeah, was it good?
Yeah, just to let you know.
Yeah, that's good. Counselor, who's drop?
Yeah. This Kingston that we, company we've been dealing with, is it politically connected with anything in Kingston or is it just that their name is Kingston?
Kingston bylaw. Uh, it's actually Frontenac bylaw.
Frontenac.
Um, no, I mean, they provide their service to several small municipalities in the area. Um, it's not at all attached to the city of Kingston, you know, they.
Oh, so, how much value is the one entering a partnership with the surrounding municipality, like? You re- reiterated or mentioned that somebody from Ottawa really wasn't aware of what we're asking for, so. I don't like to reinvent something. I'd like a person that we connect to or understand what bylaws are and what their job description is with a little. Introduction, but, uh. Is that a valid, uh, number five? Is it valid option here? It's in front of us. Is there somebody out there looking for more work?
Through you, Chair, um. Uh, so we haven't gone out to those partners. I I I guess I would say I've had conversations with other area municipalities. Where bylaw enforcement has been. An issue for them as well. And they have talked about, yes, we could have a shared service, but that's as far as it gets. It doesn't really go into. So, for example, in in Merrickville. Um, their C A O had said, oh, yeah, we're interested. And then they assigned their buyer chief to do, to do, um, um. Uh, their bylaw enforcement. And when she, when she did that, she said, but sorry, he's too busy. That that he's only dealing with Merrickville, so, um, and I'm not, sorry, that was a chief who's probably sitting there like, what are you doing? I'm not suggesting that that's not used to do, um, but having said that, you know, we've got some of our neighboring municipalities that use Frontenac bylaw as well. As, um, as as us. Now, if we join together and said, maybe we hire one individual and we both share the cost of it. At least it, um, permits them and us to have a service that, um, we're both paying for and it reduces our cost. We we do that with, um, our building officer, our chief building official, so we provide, uh, building official services to Fronton Young. Um, and that would be sort of a similar agreement. I'll share on that.
Nelson, are you, do you want to chime in on this?
Oh, I'm good.
Okay, I'll make my comments then, uh. First of all, you, uh, have to agree with Mayor Burrow, uh, with that option number three is off the table. Um, option two is, uh, something I was, uh, looking at. And I'll give you my two cents worth of, uh, the reasoning for it is, uh. Um, they're basically a correction officer or have been an auxiliary police constable or, uh. Volunteer firefighter and then credentials with the St. John's ambulance. The other reason is because they can, uh, provide, uh, the fines and summonses underneath the provincial act. Uh, I don't disagree with some of the comments regards to, uh, Frontenac, and we've had this discussion before where. It was a distance, uh, travel, uh, based on a complaint here in Elizabeth Town, Kelly. By the time. Frontenac gets the complaint, by the time they get down here, the complaint's gone or issue no longer there. Um, and it's all to my opinion, it's all about the service, what we're providing to the to the residents. So I was looking at, uh, number two, the, um, contract, uh, private contractor. But then I looked at number five. Which we were just talking about, which is the entering to a partnership with surrounding municipalities. For shared bylaw enforcement. So, when I look at that and I go back to number two again. Um. Number two, that individual is already with us, as an Eversburg Cardinal. So, I I'm not sure, um. If we can enter into, uh. So I I'm not sure um if we can enter into a, you know, a proposed agreement with them. When they already have someone in place that has the credentials um that can do the job. So there, in my opinion, there are the two options that um I would like to see us look into. I think, like I said, the the mayor may declare three is off the table. And I didn't see anybody else accepting the idea of going with number three. So. But they're just my my thoughts with number two or uh or number five. Counselor, no.
I would really like to see us at least explore number five. At least speak to the other municipalities to see if they're interested. Athens, kind of young. Edward'sburg Cardinals a little bit further away. Not as far as Kingston, but pretty close.
Who who know where the individual might live?
Yeah, yeah. But I don't like the idea of the private contractor. Who's getting this stuff okay from the other municipality and now wanting us to buy him the same stuff over again. He's not gonna, he's just gonna take money. He doesn't need to buy another vest. He doesn't need to buy another laptop. He doesn't need to buy another cell phone. And oh, by the way, you're paying fifty five dollars a month for that cell, but so is the other township. It 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 just bothers me.
And that's that's where I go to say go to a partnership.
Yes.
The equipment is already there.
Yeah, I I would like to have at least ask them, talk to them, see what we can do.
Yeah. My back to counselor down.
I would uh lean towards option one, only because. They're a separate company. Um it's if if we do go with this private contractor, um option two. There 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 doesn't seem to be enough separation there. Um you know, you're tied in with them. I I don't know what insurance is required. Um. I don't know, you know, does the guy have H S T numbers? Is he a limited company? He or she, whereas front neck is basically uh they're a corporation. You you sign a contract with them, they do their stuff. If we were to upgrade the um the terms of the contract with uh. As Rob was uh mentioning to to be able to um track things better. You know, what our expectations are. I would be more inclined to go with that because it's separated and it's not like you're possibly bringing on somebody that's. Uh almost like an employee.
What else? Counselor Brayton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh I and just tend to agree with Dan like a. We've had, we've had uh front act for quite a while. They've they've done us well. The residents got their service and uh. I I would be satisfied that. Both. Round eyes.
Yes.
Good. Mayor Burrow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um I would suggest that rather than going from a list of five just down to one. That we take one more step and narrow it down. I'd like to see the the comparison, like a SWOT analysis of. Option one and option five. What are the pros and cons of each? Because then then it becomes a fairly easy either or decision in in the end. I think both of those have value for the the reasons that uh my colleagues have already expressed. But I think there's value in in eliminating the other three, getting it down to which one of those two actually makes sense at the end of the day. That's my suggestion.
Okay, tell through this drop.
Thank you. And I I support that and and but to get there. I don't know how busy staff are. Like, what's the difficulty extending the current arrangement for one year? And in that year, do some real legwork and find out where we want to go after that.
I think we don't have a contract now. So back to our C E O.
Um thank you, uh Chair. Um well, we don't have an agreement with. By law at the moment. It's it's just a uh like a an ongoing agreement and and you know, if we say nothing, they'll just. Uh increase their fee by two percent and continue to charge us and continue to do the work that they've been doing, which. Um you know, I I did. So it's not something that um you know, we're under any. Or there's a deadline. We've got us, you know, we've got to have an agreement by this date. It's already that date's coming on. Um uh Sally uh Mellon's contract, um the last possible date we'll have to renegotiate will be December thirty first twenty twenty six. Um and then the agreement says that we have to have a new agreement with her at that point. Um so it would put them both on the same sort of target. Um but um I I guess my. You know, if we're going to do that, I think we need some support internally um to ensure that. We're following up with front neck. I think one of the, you know, some of the. Um some of the issues around them not responding is because we're not pushing them to respond. And yes, they should be doing that anyway, but. You know, we're not the one saying you you've got to go in, you've got to do this investigation, you've got to come back. What you know, what did you find? Give us a a notice. And they did an investigation for us this week. And so we were pushing them. Where are your notes? Where are the photographs? What are you gonna do? So I think if if we don't do something like that. Yes, they might not give the best service that, you know, or or the service that we're expecting, but it's because we're not pushing them.
Good, counselor no.
I can agree with the mayor. But that doesn't not make me happy. You've hired somebody to do a job. You're not a babysitter. They should be able to do their job without being nagged. I don't think you should have to push a company to give you what they're supposed to give you in the first place. Never been happy with this company. They're too far away. They do not respond when they should. They take too long. And then you have to hire somebody to do the pound work. You have to hire somebody to do the dog. Work because, quite frankly, being an hour away, they're useless for that. So we're paying two people to do one person's job. Then we have to have an internal staff person that's gonna nag them to do their job. That seems like a lot of money, but I compare them dollar for dollar and get something that's at least decent. Rather than a company that has to be nagged.
What else? So I think the I think the C E O made it clear and uh. Uh in in option one, and he made it very clear in option one that uh. There there needs to be a clear understanding with the role and responsibilities. Um because right now we don't have an agreement with them. And that may um uh. Correct some of the the actions um that you're referring to. And I don't disagree. Like I said, we. We we know in the past it's always been a distant thing. Um but if we want. We want certain things be provided, uh that has to be in in the contract. And the role of responsibility. So um back to uh Mayor Burrow's suggestion. Um if we allow uh if we go with option one, explore option one and option five. Then come back with a comparison to make the final decision. Is the committee of the whole okay with that recommendation? What recommendation will be? Go back to the uh so I'll just make it short to committee the whole recommended council. Um that uh option uh one and five be uh reviewed. Uh for consideration to be brought back to council for a decision. Is that okay? All right. My.
Uh thank you, Chair. And and just to be clear, this is for the twenty twenty six budget. So while we're developing the budget. So we can do the SWOT analysis and council can give some direction, but um so that we understand what we're putting into the budget in terms of. We need to decide to the to the budget timescale in some respect. What we can do.
Okay. All right, we'll call the question. All those in favor. Close, carry. Thank you. Uh five point two, uh eight twenty five dash six seven to the strategic plan progress update. And I'll take a mover and a seconder. Uh moved by Mayor Burrow and seconded by Counselor Bruno. Um this is just basically an update. We'll ask the C E O, is there anything you want to add or you want to go through your list or? Or a synopsis?
Um uh, Mr. Chair, no, I'm happy to take questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions regards to the strategic plan progress update? Counselor Downey.
Uh this relates to um this report and the next report. Uh. The new Dublin garage um. My original understanding was that the R F P for design options. Uh was to be explored. And then we were gonna put the whatever decision we made into the twenty six budget. So is that is that what I'm reading here? Because it it mentions uh. Facilitate construction in twenty seven.
Um through you, Chair. Uh yes, the. The intention is obviously to follow the R P process, which will come back to you uh to council. Um. The works of staff are anticipating that with the decision of council. Those are the time scales that we would expect to see the construction starting.
When?
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty two.
So that wouldn't be part of the twenty six budget process and.
It's through the chair, counselor down. There would be part of that within the twenty twenty six budget, depending on the outcome of the R F P and the evaluation. And what recommendation is made through the council and what council wages or your staff to do. There may be preliminary costing related to that that would take place in twenty twenty six as a pre-construction cost.
Okay, because I I thought we were gonna try and do whatever we had to do in twenty twenty six. Uh nobody ever really decided that twenty seven. It it was posed to us as a. Uh a very important um. Problem that had to be resolved immediately. And um that's that's the way I took it and that's the way um. I think it should be dealt with and. That would mean construction in twenty twenty six.
Through the C E O.
Uh thank you, Chair. Um so the 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 process that we're going through now is to identify a a firm that can design it. They still need to design. They still need to do all the engineering. That's to to anticipate that that's going to happen. In twenty twenty six and you're going to start construction is is um gonna be would be challenging. Um that is not to say that it is not important. It is important. This garage needs uh needs some work done on it. Um but we can't rush the process and we got to make sure that we're actually getting a well-designed and well-constructed. Um uh uh building and structure for for staff.
Okay. Yeah, and counselor no, and then Mayor Burrow, and then counselor Brayton.
Yeah, uh unless I missed a meeting somewhere. We haven't actually got. Anything to choose from, because we were going to choose whether we fix this or we build new or we. There were, I think there was three different things we were trying to do. So when we did that tour at the building. That's when we said it'd be twenty seven before that kind of thing happened. But we haven't even made a decision on what. Will be happening, right? I didn't miss a minute.
Yeah.
Um yes, uh through you, Chair, we've had twenty one submissions. So it's taking staff a little bit of time to get through those and and um come back to council with a. An appropriate evaluation of those submissions. It's um, you know, we we uh we had to extend the deadline because there was some uh. Complexity in terms of what we were asking for in those submissions. We have had twenty one. It's a big process to go through, so we will bring it up back to council. In the near future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Burrow. Uh yeah, I was just gonna uh address something that Counselor uh Downey had touched on and. And it is important. And I think what was important was that we not continue the path of the last fourteen or fifteen years of not doing anything with it. So. We needed, the importance was, we need to get on the ride. We need to decide what we're gonna do. And. To the extent that we might be able to do some of the work in in twenty six, I think we're all anxious to see that go forward. I'm accepting of the reality that that the bulk of the build will happen in in twenty twenty seven. And to some extent, uh I'm resigned to the fact that. Practically speaking, we're probably gonna fund it with a good portion of of debt. So whether it happens in twenty six or twenty seven. I don't see it having a big impact on the actual budget, like the levy itself. Um but I don't want anybody to get the impression about anybody else. I'm not taking my foot off the gas, but. Like the prac- practicality of the design and and the pre-work that ends ends up being done. I don't really expect to see a big shovel in the ground until twenty twenty seven. I don't know if that makes it more clear. I hope it does.
Well, go ahead.
Well, with the the new strong mayor power legislation, um. We were told that the budgeting process um for twenty six had to be complete by, you know, second week of January. That's why we wanted the three. Option proposals, the three options. Uh we were gonna land on one and then we were gonna, whatever we were gonna do, had to be. Decided by the second week of January. And I know there's twenty one proposals, so that does pose some problems, but still. We were told actually that this has to be dealt with in twenty five to make our decision for the twenty six budget.
Counselor Brayton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I thought there was a, I thought the process was that we were to get three options. And we were to figure out what we were going to do. And go with one option, whether it be repair or replace or whatever. I haven't seen any of that yet. And now here we are, we're figuring on. Build a new. So where the other two options fall?
Prove to our finance director.
Um thank you, Mr. Chair, through the chair to Counselor Brayton, although this is public works, what what I can say to you. And I do appreciate, so I kind of thinking the same thing sitting here. Is that there were three options that were included in the R F P and the submissions outline those three options. Um as to um either a repair, retrofit. Refurbishment or new construction. And that's part of the evaluation process we're going through now to bring back. Uh as the C I O referred to. The report that's coming back to council with recommendations is the three options. So uh although it's been used, been interchangeably here as in new construction. Um however you define it, whether that's a new build from ground zero or built on the addition. Uh an additional building to the existing or refurbishment. Um I think it uh just be clear for council, there there has not been an option taken off the table. And the report coming forward will speak to the three options. Um somewhat to use your term, uh your worship, previously a SWOT analysis, so then council can make an informed decision. Which of those three options they wish to pursue.
So you're saying we're getting that option and two more?
There the R F P that was issued, uh as I said, it was public works, but I can I can tell you as well as. The C I O will tell you, the R F P that was issued incorporated and asked for submissions. To outline those three options, not just one. The R P was very clear what those three options were. And then staff after the review. Will bring that report forward with a SWOT analysis outlining each of those three options. So again, just to be clear. There was not just one option that was asked for an R F P. The R F P clearly outlined three options council wanted to see.
So we are getting three of.
Correct, you're getting a, you're getting three options for your final decision.
Thank you. When 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 can we expect the rest of them?
Uh that um I'm a deferred C I O on that. Um I I can, I. I I don't want to give a specific date, uh and I'm being very selfish here in my world, because I've, there's budget and other things going on, but this. As well, back to your point, Counselor Downey does form part and part of the discussion of twenty twenty six budget. Um I. The C I O may correct me on this. I would anticipate possibly a report coming forward in December. Uh on what the outcome of those of our review is. Um naturally, the intention would be to bring it earlier than that, but I'm going to say December, Counselor Brayton. And I'm hoping to correction by the C I O and that.
And you're saying we we gotta have it. You've got a, we've got to have it back in by the second week of January?
Um uh on on that, uh to to provide clarification, under the strong mirror powers. The budget has to be approved by council by the first of February. So the deliberations will take place in December and January. Uh the mayor will be tabling that draft budget on December the eighth was the timeline. Um so in answer to your question, uh this report will become part of the twenty twenty six budgeting process. To what extent it becomes part of that twenty twenty six process will depend on the decision of council. Which option they wish to as staff to proceed with.
Yeah, thanks, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions in regards to the, uh, plan update? Councillor Husserov.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, four point one. Uh, design and implement accessibility training for staff and volunteers. And the middle column is talking about looking at rolling this out to council as well. And in the very right is a December thirty first. What, do we have to expect to be, have some training between now and the end of the month? Like the schedule's filling up, I'm just wondering what we, we get.
Um, through your chair, um, there was a, an email that I had sent out earlier about a number of. Um, things that we wanted, council wanted to do, one was the facilities tour. One of them was some training around AODA, now we will be able to do that all online, so I will give all of you access to. The, uh, training modules online, um. There's a few hours of them, um, but, uh, it's relatively easy for me to set that up and it can certainly be done in the next couple of days. And I can set you a deadline of whatever I want. Yeah. A week.
So we individually can expect that in the next month sometime?
Yes, you'll, you'll get an email which will, um, actually activate your account on, on the, uh, HR platform. Um, and then I will assign all of you, um, several modules which, um, you can go through, there'll be AODA training. Um, uh, harassment, um, and occupational health and safety.
If I can do that at home, like is it possible to work on for forty minutes and then go away and come back tomorrow or?
You probably best if you finish the module in one go, um, I think the longest one is about an hour. The rest of them are half an hour, something like that.
Yeah. Yep.
Right.
Anything else, anyone?
It was much more fun when we did it as a group. About training, it was much easier and quicker and.
Well, slide presentation.
Yeah, yeah, there was.
You have to come by also.
You get a slide presentation too.
All right, seeing that no other questions regards to that, um, it's just to receive, there's no report to it, right?
Dead.
All in your favor. Those who care, thank you. On to five point three, F twenty five dash twenty four, twenty twenty five draft asset management plan. And I have a mover and a seconder for that report, councillor Renault and councillor Downey second side. Um. Now to our director of finance, uh, Danny Leighton, add to your report.
Uh, thank you, Chair, and to yourself and to members of council, if I can just take a, a couple of minutes. Um, first of all, the, the report that's put in front of you, a couple of things I wanted to point out. Uh, first of all, it's a very detailed, it's a very difficult report because there are many moving parts. Um, and the other thing is too, quite frankly, we wanna ensure we get this right and get it. Because it's gonna set the stage for a long term for the township. Um, with respect to capital asset requirements and management of existing assets, uh, as far as life cycle management takes place. The, the intention of bringing this forward tonight is not for an in-depth discussion or debate, that's not what the intent in bringing this forward. It was to get it on the table in front of councillors with the, the ask that councillors take that report away with them. And come back when we're in budget deliberations for a very detailed and in-depth discussion. Because this report will form a very critical, and I think the most critical component. Of the twenty twenty six budget. The report in front of you, I just stressed the word and it's titled draft. This is not the final version by any means, is it perfect? No, it is not perfect, I'll be the first to say that. But it is the starting point, since this was distributed to council, uh, on Friday of last week. There have been various things that have been brought to my attention which require further refinements and some reinvestigation of a few things. But a further refined asset management report will, a plan will be brought forward. For council for their twenty twenty six deliberations, and in addition to that. A further re- revised or refined report will also provide a summary table outlining what the refinements or any revisions that have been made. To assist council in navigating the document when we are at budget time. This is a requirement, this asset management plan under Ontario Regulation five eighty eight oh seven. And eh, what I find very interesting is. This is a living document, I can't stress that enough, it's not something that is just looked at, approved and put on the shelf like another book or a file and pulled off. And dusted off every couple of years and had a look at. The province, however, in the requirements moving forward, the recommendation is after this plan has been approved and put in place. And we file with the province to let them know that an asset management plan has been approved. Their expectation is that we just confirm it's been reviewed on an annual basis. What we are recommending is because we're in very unusual times, and I don't need to tell anyone or round the, the council table. We're in very unusual economic times, whether it be market conditions, potential tariff structures, supply chain issues. Uh, lack of expertise and knowledge of third parties, et cetera. What I will say is an, uh, informal recommendation, and I included that in the verbiage of the report is. That this report will be updated, not just reviewed, updated on an annual basis. And again, updated as part and parcel of the budgeting process moving forward. I think that, that is a very transparent and responsible perspective and approach on the members of council regardless if. Uh, as we finished an election this year, no matter who's sitting around the table. I think it supports the fiduciary responsibility of both staff and more importantly of council. That they are well aware of what the challenges are or how capital asset management has changed even within a twelve-month period. The other problem being is if you follow to rule the province's recommendation. Of only reviewing it and confirming you looked at it once a year. Uh, that could lead in five years' time when you are required to complete a revised and new updated asset management plan. Uh, that's not when you wanna get into any surprises. That it's easier to deal with this on an annual basis, and I think it leads to a better informed, ongoing decision-making of council. And I think it will also lead to, in the immediate case, a very informed and, I, I think lively discussion, which I'm looking forward to at budget time. And as well as budgets moving forward in twenty twenty seven and onwards. As I said, uh, just to summarize, this is a starting document. Um, there are a couple of housekeeping issues that was brought to my attention today and I have it corrected, which I'll get it, uh, for people. Uh, around, for whatever reason, the numbering of pages stopped after twenty six, I don't know why. So I, at the very least, I'm going to send around a revised asset management plan to, uh, council after this evening's meeting. With, uh, complete page numbering because I think, uh, without that, it, it may cause you some anxiety. Or, um, frustration as you maneuver through this document with the various tendencies that are, are approached throughout. But as I said, the intent of bringing this forward tonight was not looking for a decision of council, certainly not. But was just to get the document on the table, to get the process moving forward and allow council the time to take it back. Have a review of it and then bring forward that we can have an intelligent discussion at budget time. A final plan based on the budget discussions, whatever revisions or edifications are requested or decided on at budget. Those would be incorporated into the plan at that point in time, those revisions. And a final plan would then be brought back to council for its approval and then subsequent filing. With the province in tandem with the approval and adoption of the twenty twenty six budget. That, uh, I, as I said, I just wanted to put it in a bit of context here. Uh, then it is an ongoing document, but I, I am fully prepared to answer any preliminary questions. That any member of council may have on this submission of this.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, hold on for councillor Downey.
Well, I'm glad that, uh, we don't have to make any. Hard, cuz a hundred and five pages from Thursday night till today, um. I, I, I couldn't, uh, I couldn't understand at all. But what I did understand was, um, that you do mention a two million dollar yearly deficit. Um, that comes, I've taken it from all the calculations in the hundred and five pages. And that you also mentioned the deficit. Plan. Is you're, you wanna address that deficit within ten years. Is that, am I reading that right?
That would be correct, yes.
So. We, we need six point eight million dollars, is that what it is every year?
If.
Four point six.
Four point six, it would be six point eight if you were, had to replace assets on an, all the assets identified in an annual basis. But it would be four point six million dollars on an annual basis.
To. To do, like where, where are we gonna be with four point six million with our two million dollar deficit? What, what's the picture look like with, if that's what council did?
So the, the picture, if, if we went with the two million dollar, um. Went leaving the two million dollar gap for lack of a better term. Um, if we were to leave that without moving forward, and this will be part of the, the twenty twenty six budgeting. Is what would be required in a levy increase to eliminate that two million dollar gap at the end of a ten-year period? And that, quite frankly, leads into another bigger discussion which I would like to bring forward, uh. Within the twenty twenty six budget discussion, and that is, uh, and it's something that has not been entertained in the past. But a multi-year budgeting forecast for the next five or ten years. What does that look like year by year in the same format that you would receive your twenty twenty five budget or your twenty twenty six? And that would be, again, part of the discussion is in order to eliminate that gap, looking at a multi-year budget for the next five years or even ten years, for example. What would that require to be done every single year to hit that key point at the end of ten years?
So six point eight million would replace, um, our assets, but four point six will. Maintain in a good condition all our assets.
Uh, through, uh, through the chair, and I apologize before I do not, uh, go through the chair, through the chair, uh, councillor Downey. You're absolutely correct, the four point six million would extend, would keep. The assets in good condition and extend the life, useful life of the asset. The six point eight million dollars would be if nothing was done, that's what's going to be the cost on an annual basis. Based on the useful life remaining of a particular asset or asset group. As, as, as I said, and if I may, if I may indulge the chair and council, just to build on what I've said, uh, for councillor Downey and for everybody's benefit. That's, as I said, this is going to form a very integral part of the twenty twenty six budgeting. But I think it would be very responsible of all of us in this room, staff and council, that. Looking at this in the twenty twenty six budget, not as one year in time, but a multi-year budget. Five and ten years from now, what is that going to do? Or what does that mean? And it is a bit of a different process of thinking, but I think. The township and the pressures, as well as other like-minded municipalities, the time has come to have those kinds of discussions.
Good, good, councillor Renault.
Just to make sure that everybody listening is very, very clear of what you just said. Four million dollars keeps whatever assets we were going to, that, that need work this year. Right? Not all of our assets, the same with the six million dollars. That's not all of our assets, that's only the assets that you would have to replace in one this year, like. So if it was a fire hall or, actually, I wouldn't even begin to cover a fire hall. But just so that everybody is clear, that isn't all of our assets, that's just one year's worth of work.
Through, through the chair to councillor Renault, for the benefit of the public and the residents, you are absolutely correct. The total asset values contained in the port, the report of the township's capital assets is one hundred and twenty eight point five million dollars. So the six million dollars if nothing was done, that's only replacing those assets. Whose useful life has come to an end and has not been extended and they have to be replaced. Whereas four point six million dollars, two million dollars lower is. Extending the useful life of that asset, whether it be through a refurbish or a renovation or a modification, not a replacement.
Good.
Thank you.
Good, Mayorborough.
Thanks, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, through you, so continuing on, on the theme. So that's a per-year cost, but it does take a look at a much longer timeframe, so that's six point eight million dollars one year, another six point eight million dollars the next year and so on. And, and when you extend that out long enough. Uh, uh, an asset that you've been maintaining and extended its lifespan on. Eventually, you know, five years from now, it reaches its extended useful life and does need replacing then. But other assets have come online in much better condition in the meantime, so this is a perpetual sort of six point eight per year. Averages out over a long period of time, the six point eight is the lazy man's way of doing it. If you don't do anything with the asset to, to maintain it, you just replace it, you know, when, when the life comes up. The four point six is the fiscally prudent thing to do because you're not just, uh, allowing, uh, equipment to, to wear out. And then trying to figure out what to do with it on the day that it dies and lets you down, and the two point six is what we're spending right now.
Correct.
So, so I wanna focus on the two million dollar gap. Uh, it's if, if we implement the recommendations in the amp and we catch up on that gap. So the ten years from now, we're no longer in that deficit position. The amp itself and that, that two million dollar gap. Closing that only starts to put us on a sustainable path ten years from now. But in the meantime. As we close that two million, so, so let's say next year we get that gap down to one point eight million, and then the year after it goes down to one point six and so on and so on. That still is gonna accumulate a backlog of twenty twenty four million, something like that. We still have to consider how we're gonna deal with, with the backlog as, as well, so. And that, none of that is supposed to be a negative comment, it's just supposed to help people who may choose to read this, to put themselves to sleep. Uh, who, you know, whatever, um, but I hope, I hope people spend time with it and try and understand it as, as best they can, but. But that, I think, was a really important point, I, I like what I see in terms of the amp and, and the trajectory that it's gonna get us on. But I don't want people to walk away thinking, oh, okay, well, in ten years we'll be good. Yes, but we still haven't addressed this, this accumulated mountain of historical. Consumption of assets, and it's one of the reasons I've always been so consumed with that asset consumption ratio and the fact it was always going up and up and up. In the last few years, we've managed to turn it so it's gone down. Now, if we start to close the, the gap, it didn't get like this overnight, we're not gonna fix it overnight, but I think we're on a much better journey than ever we have been before.
Um, through the chair to, to Mayorborough, sending the rest of the council, I totally agree with everything you have said, uh, your worship. The other thing which I, even for myself, was very surprising, and this was also pointed out in the subsequent, uh. Subsequent discussion this afternoon, uh, is the overall quality of the assets, the percentage of assets that are in. Better than fair condition, um, I, I. Expected it to be much different than what the a- assessment has come out with, which is a good starting point. To build on with this asset management plan, but to his worship's outline. That's right, it does not for the members of the public eliminate the backlog, our goal is in that ten year to eliminate the annual gap.
Good, councillor Brayton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just wondering if, uh. Mother burn road come under that?
We will need to do mother guys.
Yeah, sure.
I can't answer that.
Oh, okay, thank you.
All that assets come under that, all are always under that.
Oh, okay.
Even jointly owned roads.
Okay, any other questions?
Nope, no, I have to. Reiterate, that's a lot of information. I'm not gonna ask for forgiveness, but I didn't have enough time to import all that in my head. I was busy with a few things. So appreciate the fact that we got a little more time and.
And, and that's what the director of finance and I spoke about before the meeting started tonight was. It's just, we're not going through this whole thing tonight, it's, it's something just to. Think yourself, acknowledge to it, aware of it, and be, be prepared for it when it comes to budget time. Anything else?
We don't have to memorize it.
No.
No. Just highlight ones. So I'll make the I'll read the recommendation, the council received a report F twenty five dash twenty four. Twenty twenty five draft as asset management plan with attachment A one for information purposes and further review. The council direct staff to include the twenty twenty five draft asset management plan. And its recommendations as attached to the report and any budget implications each year to be approved in the twenty twenty six budget process. And that council direct staff to make any material amendments. To the twenty twenty five asset management plan for council approval. Uh, of the final final asset management plan upon conclusion of the twenty twenty six budget process. That is the recommendation, all those in favor? Those carried, thank you. We're on to uh five point four, that's uh A dash twenty five dash sixty, that's the Green Bank Cemetery update. Councillor Ustroff is going to exclude himself from this discussion. So I get the uh mover, the second for this report, councillor Edie, seconded by councillor Renault. Uh, I will go to our staff, uh deputy clerk, is there anything you want to add to this report?
I'm not at this.
Okay, let me just read the report, so the recommendations, the committee receives staff report A twenty five dash sixty. And that the committee recommends council, committee recommends council provide direction. To staff to proceed with option number such and such, whatever options will come up with. All right, so onto that, I'll open the floor for discussion. Mayor Burrow.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, I'm I'm going to cut to the chase, I think the report is, it's very uh plain. Uh, it it covers all of the the things that we need to know. I foresee the finish line being the same, it's only how we get there, while we have the opportunities to to get there, uh get the smoothest ride possible. I'm going to suggest that we go with option two as recommended.
Thanks.
Councillor Brayden.
Thank you. I think as every councillor knows that we've we've been through this before. With uh with uh the uh. Cemeteries in the down fifty, there's uh. I think the count is over forty. Uh, and this is, they're closed and open and and whatever, but. If we. Look after them and look after them properly, and I'm not saying we shouldn't look after them, I'm saying we should look after them. Uh, but there was all, this part of the country was all settled. Uh, about the same time and and uh that's how come we've got all the cemeteries closed and unclosed. I'm just wondering if there wouldn't be. Uh, before we made our minds up, whatever. Uh, would there be any money from the government, province, the provincial government? That were in this predicament, and and we talked about this over several times, several years. Uh, I would be hoping there'd be some some money somewhere to help us. Uh, if we look after it proper, we wouldn't have near enough money to do it. I would. Maybe we could have a delegation go to somebody and see if we could get some money. And when we're one of those conferences, I don't know, like, I just think there should be more some money laying around that we could tap in. Uh, if everybody agrees to that or whatever, like, but I I just bring that up. But I I know that we've we've got to look after. And we we shouldn't look after one anymore than we do the other, and like I say, there's over forty. So. Hallelujah.
Thank you, councillor Renault.
Yeah, I was surprised. That the mayor suggested, I thought he would have suggested three. This is, this is a cemetery that still has plots in it, right, if I read that correctly? Though that means a lot of, it'd be a lot of staff time, I don't know how many plots are left there. But number three was kind of intriguing that some of the municipalities just provide a little bit of cost to the. Private board to keep it running without having to have council involved with.
You're asking a question to the staff then?
Well, I I'm kind of wondering, it says here that you might have to do a deeper dive into it, would that not? Be a better option than number two?
Back to Mayor Burrow.
Good, uh thank you, Mr. Chair, um I guess I sort of, I also skipped ahead, there's another report coming up, not one but two items from from now. And so my thought process was if we fund. If we fund one, they won't have to to create a policy that would fund any of the still active uh cemeteries. And so we'll be doling out uh multiple subsidies to multiple operating boards. If I combine this with the idea of the of that next report that continues on with our thinking of. The establishing of one overarching cemetery committee. Then then I see that as being a lower cost option, because rather than than helping to support multiple different cemetery boards. We will just look after any of the of the cemeteries with one overarching board and one set of insurance and those types of things. For any of the have already been abandoned and will continue to be abandoned. As those boards age and don't find people to replace them and so on, so I I thought this was actually a lower cost option. And understanding that we're just focused on this one cemetery right now, do we do we continue in negotiations? With a board that is still available to negotiate with, rather than, oh, well, nobody's around on the board anymore, and so it's just de facto abandoned. That's a messier, more costly process, so for this cemetery only, that's why I picked option two. But now you have a sneak peek into some of the comments I'm going to make around the next report.
Good, anything else, councillor Downing? I I would go with option number two and. Um, tying it into a possible cemetery board. To oversee some of these sales and who knows what the board. I I think a new board will do a lot of good, um. I know a few cemeteries in Toledo, for example, that are are run by boards at the moment. Um, they could use money. But they're not, they're they're dealing with what they have, and so if you did open it up. I I'm thinking there's a lot, if you add up all the different cemeteries that are still in operation that. They all need money. A lot of them aren't to the point where they're broke, but. They need money, so following uh Earl's idea as well, if there is some extra money um. Out there, possibly this committee could research that as well. Councillor Edie, you want to get on this?
I just want to do option two. Be my choice.
So uh I'll make a comment or two. Uh, first of all, in regards to councillor Brayden's uh. Idea of um going and asking the problem is basically uh to see if there's any funding out there that can support. Uh municipal um cemetery, abandoned cemeteries for maintenance or whatever, I I don't disagree. And also. I think when in in regards to councillor Renault's question in option three. Uh, a deeper dive into this option, uh it would be interesting to find out how. The other municipalities fund it. Or where they get their funding from. And is this, is this only for active cemeteries? Or all cemeteries within the township? Because this, in my opinion, this is only only in regards to the Green Bank Cemetery. And and my opinion, we have to look at with a broader brush, in my opinion. And that will cur will cope. Per tail down to five point six underneath the other one as well. Cause we've had many discussions about all these cemeteries, we have some abandoned and some active and and. And I don't disagree with councillor Downey's comments either, there's there's active cemeteries, there's boards are. Are are um. Well managed um and and doing a great job, but there's going to be a a time and place where they're going to be saying, hey, I need some money. To keep going, or they're going to be like this bank, Green Bank Cemetery and coming to the township and saying. We're all done, we don't want to take it over and it's up to you guys now to manage it. Um, I I think we have to look at this as a whole, not just one cemetery. So I had option three as something to really investigate a little more into. Now I'll open it up to anybody who wants to make a recommendation, which option you want to go with. Mayor Burrow.
So I'm I'm going to go back to uh for for what's in front of us right now, I'm going to go back to to my recommendation of option two. I understand your point about uh where you're going with with option three. I'm just concerned that by the time we're finished doing that deep dive, and then we have that discussion and we get that all set up. It may be too late to continue negotiating with an existing board, so to resolve this one particular cemetery. Um, I don't see those two things as being necessarily mutually exclusive, so to deal with this one, I still favor option two. That doesn't preclude us looking at option three as a potential solution for cemetery issues in in the broad sense. But I get the sense there's a there's a little bit of sense of urgency with this one, because at some point, the people that are on that board are just going to say, you know what, we're done. And and then we won't be negotiating, we'll have to go through a much messier process.
I, anyone else want to try?
Uh, thank you, Chair, and and um I I I agree with the mayor, I think what we're trying to deal with right now is the one that's in front of us. Uh, the next report will talk about a cemetery board, and perhaps you're looking for the cemetery board to make some recommendations around. Whether there's an opportunity to provide any funding um going forwards from uh from. As other municipalities are doing, so maybe it's something you task the cemetery board with um doing some of the background research in terms of. What other municipalities are funding, how much they're funding, what the ongoing costs might look like uh for the municipalities, so I think. Um, we're trying to deal with Green Bank right now, and so we need to figure out what we want to do with them.
Good, thank you, councillor Brayden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh for their main mistake. I'm afraid if we make it, that we take two and get a get a uh. Consensus of a. Committee. For one cemetery, when it comes to the other cemeteries, what are you going to do? You're going to have to follow all, we did it for one, we're going to have to do it for another, and we had one famous councillor at one time. If you put a light bulb up, you do it for one, you got to do it for another one, and it it goes on and on and on, and I'm just. Not prepared to do that. At this time.
Mayor Burrow, so just a point of clarification, if I may, Mr. Chair. This particular report deals only with with Greenback, it's it's not talking about setting up a committee, that's the next report that's coming. Two two items from now, this is simply do we proceed with negotiating an agreement with the existing board? Rather than leave them to timeout on their own and then just abandon it to us. And and dealing with that after the fact and taking it over is much messier than having an agreement. That's negotiated between the two active parties right now, that's the only one we're talking about right now.
Yeah, yeah, well, I I. I'm tired of it, if we made a decision on this one, we're going to have to make the the same decision on the next one. That's all I'm saying.
All right, anyone else? All right, need a motion, I need an option on the floor.
Well, if you want to form a motion, I'll put it number seven.
All right, option two is on the floor, all those in favor of option two? Opposed? Option two it is, so I will read the recommendation. May receive staff report A twenty five dash sixty, and that the committee recommends council provide direction. To staff to proceed with option number two. All those in favor? Those will carry, thank you. All right, down to five point five, this is uh A twenty five dash sixty four. Draft twenty twenty six council calendar, and I have a a mover and a second for that report. Councillor Edie, councillor Renault. Madam, uh thank you, thank you. And deputy clerk, uh anything you want to add to your uh report?
Uh, not at the time, but I'm prepared to answer questions.
Any selections from anyone on the committee regarding for the twenty twenty six calendar? Mayor Burrow.
Not a question, just a a comment, uh just to send thanks through you, uh to staff for preparing this in advance. Helps me get my whole year calendar organized, you do the same thing at the county level, uh and some other boards and on and and without. This process of of all those things, life will be chaos, so thanks very much for looking ahead and organizing that all for us.
Anyone else? So, they'll see anything, so the recommendation is that uh report A twenty five sixty four. Be received and the committee recommends council approve the draft twenty twenty six council calendar, and that council receives the right to cancel or alter the time of day. Or day of any meeting with proper notice being given to the public, all those in favor? Those who has carried.
Yes, I have a question along the same line, like, going forward, is it possible to? For staff or to plant that into my calendar on my iPad? Like a month ahead? When there's a meeting planned? I'm like. Some organization do, I wonder if it's physically possible.
Through you, uh through you, Chair, um. Y- yes, um as long as you're using your city, um your your township account. If you're not using, like you use your your township email, yes, we could do that, uh if it was an outside one, I think it would be a little bit more challenging.
I I think everybody should use a. After the next election, it should be mandatory, but that's besides the point, that wasn't my question, but it could work, but I.
Good, Mayor Burrow. Not to prolong this, but through you, I think, I think even if even with non-t township emails. Then the almost is just on the individual, as long as their system is set up correctly, so that when, like if you set them all up as Zoom invites, for instance. I know we have limitations on virtual participation, but it would be a mechanism by which an invitation to be sent out. That I know does traverse the requirement to be within the the township domain. So that may also so solve the issue of minimal staff time, maximum return on investment with flexibility to non E K T W P addresses. There's something to consider.
Go ahead, um certainly staff, through you, Chair, certainly staff can look into that. Um, it may also help that if there isn't going to be a council meeting, if some for some reason it gets canceled. We can remove the invite which will notify each of you that the has been removed from the calendar, so we can look at that.
Councillor Brayden.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, could we at least? Could we at least get a printout on a on a. Ledger, the same as a uh, the same as the phone numbers of everybody with the laminated. Thing.
We we can certainly get you a paper copy.
Good, laminate.
Sure.
And with phone numbers. I know you don't ask your phone, but anyway. You've been, you've been pretty good.
Times you've called me.
Yeah, yeah, I bet you've been pretty good. But that that'll happen, eh?
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Good, thank you. All right, uh we've already passed that, uh we're now moving on to uh five point six, that's a report. Eight twenty five sixty five. Uh, yes, got committee uh draft terms references for cemetery committee. And can I get a mover and a second for that, uh Mayor Burrow, seconded by councillor Downing? And I'll just read off the recommendation and we get a discussion that the committee receives staff report. Uh, number A twenty five dash sixty five, and that the committee recommends this council to provide staff direction to prepare. A bylaw to establish a cemetery committee and adopt the cemetery committee draft terms of reference. That's the recommendation, I will now open it up to the floor. Any discussion? Mayor Burrow.
They all seem shy, so I'll go ahead and and start. Um, I'll pick up on where you left off with some of your your previous comments, I think the time has come to to take a look at this issue as a whole. Um, to councillor Brayden's point, we do have quite a quite a number of abandoned cemeteries that have fallen to us for responsibility. I think the number is well over for you, I think it's into the fifties to tell you the truth, approaching sixty sixty, whatever it is, it's a lot. Um, and and I see this as an ideal uh ideal solution, there's a lot of flexibility, it doesn't pigeonhole us into. Uh, in, I don't think into some of the concerns that councillor Brayden had, that now now uh existing boards are going to. Uh, in, I don't think into some of the concerns that Counselor Brayton had, that now, now uh, existing boards are gonna. Seek financial help and all those types of things. This can be an advisory committee as well as the potential for being an operating committee if we choose to, to take that direction. So I see a lot of value. In, in coming out of establishing a, a committee. And if we are to uh approach a, a delegation request, which I fully support. I think the province is gonna receive us uh far more favorably. If we are able to demonstrate this as one of the steps that we've already taken. So we're doing everything that we can. But, you know, I think that our ratio is exceptional in terms of the number of cemeteries we're dealing with compared to other ones, especially in the region. So we can gather some of that data and put that in front of them along with, look, we're doing our bit. We're not just coming to you hat and hand saying, look, help us, you know. Or live less. It's, we've done everything, but there's a fiscal capacity issue here. I think we're, we're gonna be better received, so.
Thank you, Counselor Brayden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, well, I uh, I think I got a difference opinion. Which is my. I think if we, we went looking for money and they, we had a committee all set up and whatever, uh. They could also look at saying, well, y- you guys have made up a committee. You must have the money behind you. Why, why did you make a committee up? You don't have that money. So, I think that's a way to look at it too. Uh, I think we should. I think we sh- we've, we've gotta, we've gotta go and we've gotta do something. And we've gotta get some money behind us. And I just wondered. Seeing that our numbers are so big. And it's unfortunate we were called Upper Canada instead of Lower Canada. But actually, with the old, old fellas, they uh, Trump. And this is pretty near the end of line going west. From uh. Champlain, Lake Champlain and the Indians chasing them one another across the, across the uh. We're burning the White House down. Uh, but I think that, I think that we've gotta. I know we've gotta go somewhere and look for some money if we can. And I, I think that, as the mayor stated, we maybe start looking up a, a delegation, getting delegation to go up to uh. To the conference in Toronto, but uh. I think there should be money out there. Surely they got it. They could see the predicament we're in with the. And like I said before, you do it for one, why not do it? Why not do it for the other one? So like, it's kind of a long rope that we've gotta foil and uh. I, uh, I heard uh, on a, one of the uh counterparts in the state, sir, he said. He was as nervous as a ugly stripper. Uh, and I'm kinda in the same boat as getting kinda nervous about. Getting some money and going housing for money, but we've gotta do it. We just gotta do it, like. Thanks.
Alright, thank you, Chair. Uh, it tells their daily and then Counselor was dropped.
I, I would go with option number two. And then in the draft terms of reference. Uh, talks about Lehighs a couple of times. I'm not sure if that was uh. Just part of the, how it was printed out or what?
Uh, through you Chair to Counselor Downey, uh, when it's talking about reference to the Lehigh Cemetery. Uh, that is the only active cemetery that this township is uh. Operating that has still grave sites. So when it talks about the cemetery, we may provide verbal updates. And then maintenance and long-term sustainability and development of the Lehigh Cemetery. You can't develop or maintain an abandoned cemetery that's full and there's no sites left. So that's why specifically.
Well, I thought the one across the road here also.
We, that's not us. They only.
Or this one?
They, there is no sites left.
No sites?
We, we will permit burial when you produce the internment certificate, but we're not selling. The only one where you're currently selling.
Is Lehighs?
Yep.
Okay, so, thank you.
Okay, Counselor was dropped.
My question was on the same line, but the paragraph when it talks about the authority of it, after you have a scope. And use authority in development of Lehigh Cemetery. And I thought, and or any other that we may obtain it in the future.
It can be updated.
Oh, okay, can be updated. Fine, that's fine. Okay.
Just as currently, it's the only one.
I'm good with that, as long as.
Lucille, um, thank you, Chair. Um, perhaps we can generalize that. Not saying specifically Lehigh, but to cemeteries that we own that have existing plots.
Yes.
So that it doesn't take it, uh, and they made a specific one, but if in the future we um. Take ownership of another cemetery that has plots, we have the ability to have this committee do something.
Correct. Thank you. I had the same comment written down. Mega generic, not specify the one. Right. Alright, anyone else? We have option two on the uh, on the table here. Um. So I will read it and says that uh. Committee receives staff report eight twenty-five dash sixty-five and the committee recommends council provide staff direction to prepare. A bylaw to establish a cemetery committee and adopt the cemetery committee draft reference, terms of reference. We're going with option number two, which is direct staff to proceed with preparing required final document. Bylaw to establish a cemetery committee and advertise for members. All those in favor? Opposed and carry? Thank you. We are now on to number five point seven. That is uh Fire Emergency Services, F E S twenty-five dash sixteen. Third quarter report twenty twenty-five and I'll hand it over to uh. It's just a report. Um, so I'll take a mover and a seconder and receive the report. Count through straw and Counselor Noel. And now I'll turn it over to our chief.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I'll try not to take too much of your time up, so uh, next slide, I already. Um, so I always just like to start with our mission statement, not changed. It's the same that I always have, but we just wanna make sure that it's relevant. The primary mission of those technical fire and emergency services is to provide a range of programs to protect the lives of property, the residents of the town. Uh, these include ad- adverse effects of fires, sudden medical emergencies, or exposures to dangerous conditions created by humans or nature. And one of our models is our helping us. Next?
Sorry.
Um, so legislation, there haven't been any significant changes in legis- legislation in this quarter, um. Just a few highlights. We are on uh course to uh meet mandatory uh. Uh, training requirements for July of next year. We're down for our last uh. Um, topic for most of our members was, would be the hazmat training and it's already booked with the province and we're doing that uh. Part before the end of the year and part in the first quarter of next year. So we'll be well ahead of uh the curve on our requirement for training. Uh, current staffing levels as of the end of the third quarter. Uh, station one, we have twelve firefighters, six captains, the fire administrator and fire chief. And station two currently has six firefighters, two captains and the deputy chief. And station three has fifteen firefighters and three captains. So our totals are at the bottom there, thirty-three firefighters, eleven officers and two chief officers.
One question before we move on. You had a recruitment um campaign?
Yep.
How'd that go?
We're still working on it. So we have, uh, we have thirteen individuals right now that are going through the process. So we're currently doing uh. Um, aptitude testing and then we'll move on to uh interviews and fitness testing. We hope to have uh some names for you by the first of December.
Okay.
Before we leave that, that, just a quick question through you, Mr. Chair, if I may. Something jumped out at me, the ratio of firefighters to captains. I can understand that station two might be an outlier. Uh, that, that you might want more than one captain at a particular station. So wasn't too concerned about that. Seems to be quite a difference in the ratio between captains and, and firefighters at the other.
Yeah, so the, the general best practice story through you, uh, to the mayor, the best practice is, is five to one. Um, however, we are doing some uh, some. Um, future planning at station one, we'll say. So we have a couple more junior captains that are in, currently in. In coaching to, to, uh, to learn that job and with the anticipation that some of our members there will. Be uh retiring sooner rather than later. So we're, we're preparing for the future. And we are down a couple firefighters at two. So that's really where the, where the discrepancy is there. So it's just. Um, I guess fortunately or unfortunately, um, captains tend to stay in the job because obviously they made it to that rank by their years of experience and their. Their sort of zest for the job, right? So um. Um, the firefighter numbers tend to fluctuate a little bit, but uh, so uh, they're up and down, but they. I guess the important thing is there that, yeah, the rank is captain, but they're also expected to be firefighters at the same time, right? So. If, if someone gets there, uh, gets there to be the supervisor before you, then I guess you're a firefighter today, right? So, so yeah, they, they're. They do a role really, but yeah, five to, five to one is generally the good, the good practice in the industry, yeah.
Okay, I knew that'd be a good answer. I just didn't know what it was.
And uh, we did actually lose a firefighter uh in this quarter for, to retirement, so um. They had, they moved out of the area because of other commitments, so they had to leave. Um, this is uh, the update from the administration and uh C E M C. So as you all know, we completed the tabletop exercise for twenty twenty-five. And the scenario this year was uh based on a cyber attack uh on our I T services. And we had some good feedback from some community partners, the O P P and Onsu, Onserv, who's our I T uh provider. And uh, there is a follow-up meeting to be planned in November. I think it's already scheduled. And uh, we'll be discussing some issues uh that came out of it, some, some ways to help mitigate some of those things. And uh, some, some topics that came up when we had some more discussions with our insurer as well. Um, sorry, I was one more ago. Uh, we went to the uh, the fall uh sector meeting in Loyalist, uh, which is put on by the province for emergency preparedness. And uh, we spent a day there in Selby. And we talked about uh wildfire, uh, what goes on in the wildfire world and how um. The province prepares for that, um, mainly in the uh, the fire district, which is more to the north. But again, those uh. If we need them, those uh services are, are available to us. So we learned what, what resources we could call upon there from the province. Uh, we talked about abandoned, abandoned mines, of which we have uh a few in the, in the township. Um, and what the, the uh legal requirements are from a municipal point of view and uh. And there, there's also a ministry, believe it or not, that takes care of that specifically. Um, and they uh, they make sure that all those regulations are being followed and they're being safe so that people can access them. And then we talked, uh, and then we had another presenter that talked about the Ontario ventilator equipment pool, so. For those who don't know what that is, uh, my, myself being one of them at the time, now I do know. But uh, actually through the hospitals in Toronto, they have a, a pool of um ventilation equipment for people that actually sometimes. Some people need ventilators at home. And they also talked about a lot of issues if they have uh. Problems with power edges and stuff or how they get that service to be continuous for the people that require it. And they take care of all that and like pre-planning for all that for an emergency. So it was quite interesting, but yes, so they, uh, so there is actually a. An organization that takes care of that for a lot of people in the province to make sure that they, they have the proper equipment at home that they need to further, for their breathing and such, so. Next.
Question? Abandoned mines, are they on private property?
Um, well, if you wanna know, you can Google abandoned mines in Ontario and they actually do have a map. And I think they are all on private property, the ones that we have in the township.
Okay.
Yeah, but they still, they still have uh the, the abandoned mines. People, the, the, yeah, whatever the arm is, they, they, they have kind of. Some legislative power to make sure that people are maintaining them properly and they're safe, that people aren't being able to get in them and such, so.
I think this, this, oh, something like that. It's just on something on the surface, a little hole or some deep, deep.
Depends, it can be both, yeah.
Can be both.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, health and safety. So we had our uh health and safety meeting in September at station three. Um, we had no, we had no incidents or injuries to report from Q three. Uh, and the training facility, the house at Murphy Road that was donated from one of our community partners, um. Unfortunately, we're not gonna be using it anymore. The last time we were down there, we uh, we, we run into a lot of uh bats and other creatures that have moved in. And so we just out of abundance caution, we don't wanna expose our members to any possible uh. Issues from theses or such that might be in the building. So and as well as the people that own the building, they, they thought that it was a prudent move to that we just. Stop using it. So we certainly appreciate it and we got a, we got a ton of use out of it and a lot of good training out of it. So it was much appreciated and it's, it's gonna run its course at this point, so. Um, fire prevention and education. So there's little statistics in the one, uh, top, upper corner there of amount of inspections that we've been doing uh on the quarter in the year. Um. And yeah, as you all know, again, with the dry summer that we had to, the whole township. And most of the county was on fire ban for about three and a half months, so uh. There was not a whole lot of uh fire inspections to do as far as burning. There's no burning to be had. Um, so we worked on some other stuff. So we did a lot of public education. Uh, went to several events over the years, car shows and uh events at the libraries and schools and such uh. Uh, in the spring and a little bit this, this fall and the later part of the quarter. Um. And we had some work with some property owners in the, in the township with vacant uh buildings that we've been ongoing, working with them to, to uh. To make sure they're secure and safe. Um, and we've made several trips to different areas of the township where we've had some encampments of uh, of. Um. Unhomed individuals and we're, we're trying to make sure that they're being safe. And if they're on. Uh, municipal property that they're, they're trespassing, moved along because it, it's not allowed. Um. And we've been working on bi-weekly inspections at the, the new building at Sherwood Park Manor. So it's starting to come along and we're starting to uh. Get some finishing on the inside of it, so. So it's come good.
Mayor Burrow? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a, a question regarding the, the fire ban. Just because you tell people a lot different doesn't mean that they don't. Um, so did you encounter many issues where there've been fires started, you know, inappropriately?
No, we had, uh, we had one instance right at the end of the ban where we uh, we did actually charge somebody for cost recovery and uh, and. We did recover the cost for that call, so.
Okay.
So we did well. So our residents, uh, hats off to our residents. They were very uh understanding and they did follow the fire ban. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the time.
Well, that, that's good. No complaints. That's something to be celebrated. Thanks. Counselor Noel?
Just one question. You said encampments.
Hmm.
If they're on municipal land, you move them off. But if they're homeless, where to move them off to? Because I'm sure a private landowner wouldn't want them on there.
No, and the private is the same, but it, it's, it's kind of, it's just the way you go about it. So if they, if. If, as an instance, if they were to move on to your property. Then you would, you would be the, the person that would be responsible to say to the uh law enforcement agencies that they're, they're not. Uh, welcome on your property and then they would be trespass for your property because, but because you as the private citizen, you would be the one that owned the land that would have to. Have to trespass them from the properties.
I just wondered where you were moving them to.
Well, we're not, uh, we don't have any specific place that they move them to, but we do work, we do work with the um, the uh. Crisis team for the O P P and uh mal- health organizations in Leeds-Gremble. And uh, they come with us when we go. We don't just, we don't just go take their tent down and pack their bag and send them on their way. We, we bring other people with, with us, uh, the, the John Howard Society and uh, and like I say, the crisis team for the, for Leeds and Gremble. Come with us and we, we offer them as much help as we can and give them resources to. To, sometimes it may be just a hotel room for a couple of nights till they can find some other kind of a arrangement or whatever, but. Essentially, it's just uh protecting the liability of the municipalities as well as the private property owners, right? Because if they're on your property, you're sort of responsible for them, right? So.
Yeah, Mayor Burrow? Um, I just wanna amplify that, that last point uh for the benefit of the public. I don't want anybody thinking uh that. Uh, this is done inhumane, uh, quite, quite the opposite. The, the whole way in which that uh challenge is, is being met now is very different than. What it would have been just a few years ago. And so the people that find themselves in encampments are given notice. Uh, as the chief had indicated, a number of agencies come together to offer support to, to those people. So the biggest thing is that. They're made aware of all of the opportunities they have to avail themselves of support and assistance. Uh, and at the end of the day, there are gonna be some people that choose to live rough like that for, for whatever reason. But there are many cases, uh, success stories, if I can put it that way, where people have been uh homeless in the encampments. And then they get into some uh supportive housing or they get into some treatment program if that's what they require. Each story is, is unique, uh, and there, while there are lots of people entering the, the homeless uh sector. There are also lots of people exiting the homeless sector now as a result of those efforts, so. Um, the work is not done by any means, but it's getting better than ever it has been before. Um, the work is not done by any means, but it's getting better than ever has been before, yeah.
And and through uh through the. Chair, sorry, to to everybody as follow up as well, I mean. The reason why we bring all the groups together is because our concern, especially at this time of year, is a fire safety concern, we're coming into the colder months and we have come across some. Um, very significant uh fire and life safety concerns, uh the way that people are set up for to to provide themselves with heat and such, so we kind of want to. Get ahead of that before and find them other arrangements before the before the real cold weather kind of hits, if it's possible, right? So. So that's why I think that uh there's been a little bit of a, it's been a little bit of a push on in the last little while to try to get those individuals as much help as we can. To find a better place to stay for the winter, so. Yeah. Um, so training, um. We've. We like to work with other community partners, so we did, we we were able to obtain a school bus from one of our other community partners and uh. We spent a few nights uh learning how the ins and outs of the best way to access a school bus. Uh, you know, through the sides, through the top and through the back and whatever we need to do with our equipment and uh. And, you know, our our members, it was a new unique opportunity for some of them. Um, that hadn't seen that before and uh. Obviously, we have a lot of uh school purpose vehicles up and down the road every day, so it's an important thing to make sure we're ready and prepared for that if we ever need to uh to do a rescue that way. And we also had our officer group uh on a Saturday in August to spend a whole day just with the officers, uh working on advanced uh. Um, auto extrication techniques, so um they could lead those uh those rescues in the future if need be, so. Um, and then uh. The membership actually got to spend an evening uh listening to me, so I don't know if they liked it or not, but uh. We talked about uh mental health initiatives and uh and what they have available to them and and how they can access different resources uh. To help with mental health, so we thought that was very important to uh. Just go through the whole gamut of things that are available there for our members to uh access should they need it.
Yeah, uh I was kind of surprised to read, Mr. Chair, that the chief didn't take advantage of of the the silver plated gold plated Segway. As I talked about the the grain, so there's a little prompt for you, back over to you.
Yeah, so uh yeah, so everybody uh, I know you guys passed the bylaw, but um. If if you don't know or what you don't maybe don't know what it was for particularly, um uh we got to get some funding from the government to uh. Get about twenty five thousand dollars worth of training for all of our members to on the health initiatives, that's what uh that's what that grant money is going to be spent on, so. Um, we actually had a meeting with the the M P P on Friday, um and uh. You know, discussed uh how we're going to use the money in section and uh so it's being rolled out across the province now, so. We're going to be selecting our training programs that we are going to use that for and that will be accessed by all our members.
That's awesome.
Um, revenue, oh, that's, everybody likes revenue. So April to June, we recovered uh twenty six thousand four hundred and twenty dollars and seventy one cents. And July to June, we still had outstanding eleven thousand eighty nine and fifty cents. And on the year, we're extending twenty two, seven ninety two and sixty, but that number's changed even since this slide was made, so there's some more some more uh. Money that have been coming in pretty regular, so uh. A lot of it is with insurance companies, as we all know, it takes time, right? So you might build them in January but not see the money till September kind of thing, right? So. But yeah, so it's uh it's working pretty good with uh with our insurance recoveries and and your. Uh, fleet, so Truck Three had its annual service completed, no issues, uh. Pump Three actually had to go back to have a pack packing repair in the pump that was also done last year. Uh, the reason for that is is we had it out of call and there was some issue with the source water and it got a little dry that it burnt packing, so we had to redo it again, so. Um, it was just one of those things, there was an issue with. During the partial blockage and and the operator didn't know until it was kind of too late, right? So. Um, anyways, it's repaired now and it's good to go. Um, Truck Two had its annual service done and needed a C V axle replaced. Uh, Rescue Five had its annual service done and yet no issues. Truck One, uh, that's my truck, had front brakes replaced. Uh, Truck Four had the the finally the tailgate repaired, that's had the dent and the rusty spot in it for about three or four years, so. We got it replaced or repaired and uh we've got a nice, if anyone's seen it around the township, it's got nice yellow stripes on it now, so. Um, we thought we put them out on the highway, so we want to make sure that they're well seen, especially the smaller trucks uh. On the highway, so we we had it had yellow stripes put on it when we got it back from the paint shop. Um, and Tanker One is. Right now, so the tires are ten years old on that tanker and we've had to uh. We had to replace uh four tires on it already, and so we're making a plan right now to replace the uh the other six. Probably next year, um as part of its annual maintenance, so. Um, we've had two or three tires go flat on it and had to replace them uh. On an emergency basis and that's a lot more expensive than than planned for it, so. Um, capital, so mo- a lot of our capital projects are complete for the year. Um, as we discussed, I think probably in the last quarter report, we had a real difficult time finding a contractor that would even do the work for us. Or had the time to do the work. And then the second issue was to stay within budget. So we eventually did find a contractor that's willing to do the renovations. And is in budget and uh so we've we've made, actually the first payment has gone out to them to start the process. And we're ordering materials right now, so we're hoping to be done sometime in the middle of December, I think by the time they get the. The parts in and they're figuring on about two weeks' work to uh secure the front uh reception area at Station One. Um. And yeah, so that's just, we're going to do that in the fourth quarter and then. The decontamination room, we kind of put on the back burner for now, but it'll it'll come up, I suspect that that uh. That capital line item will have to be carried over to next year and we'll uh we'll work on both rooms next year with a. With an additional line item for the second room in the twenty twenty six budget, but uh. Uh, we're kind of sort of waiting for the contractor that we fired right now to see how they do and how it goes, and if it goes well, then we may. And try to get him to bid that uh that room again and see where he's at and. We'll have a bit of a an idea what his work's going to be like and we'll go from there. Give me a second. Um, twenty twenty five responses, so. No surprise there, they're they're going up every day. Um, so we're 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 having a a big year as far as total numbers and I know I had a couple of conversations with a couple of these along the way and we talked earlier. In the year that medicals and N B Cs or car accidents were our biggest contributor, and as you can see, that that continues. Um. So um, just with that, I've had, I've been approached by the E M S chief to talk about our response protocols, but. Um. The the thought was when they changed to the different protocol that they had that that would reduce our numbers of medical calls, but uh. Excuse me, it it hasn't so far, but it's just because we're getting the calls that are still triggering that response, so. I don't think it really has anything to do with the difference in their protocols, it's just we're still triggering on our on our bylaw agreement with them, so. Uh, the hours for the year. So. Again, there's just a breakdown, so the total total hours for the members rate as of the end of the quarter was twenty five hundred and seventy two. Person hours. And we had thirty five officers complete uh duty weekends. And then the rest is just other other activities that they do. And that's it. For the quarter, any other questions?
He's pretty impressive.
Thank you for your report, Chief. Okay, on to uh number six correspondence, uh six point one. E L W C news release dated October twenty four, twenty twenty five. Um. Eric, you want to comment or anything on this, since the warden is talking stuff?
Well, um, yeah, I'm I'm not a warden, uh so I don't participate in these meetings, I get the information from from the warden and quite often it's just referenced around the. The same materials that we find in the in our agenda package, uh. So I don't really have, I don't really have anything of value that that I can add other than um. I think most people would agree with the priorities that they've taken on and the direction that they're taking on, so.
Thank you.
But if if anybody does have comments, they want me to to take that back, I'm happy to have a good relationship with the warden, I'm happy to take that back, so she can take it to to her meetings for sure.
The the next one is the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, letter dated October thirtieth, twenty twenty five. That was uh. Was a request to be sent and we added to this agenda, which it is. In regards to the development charges. So, um, I have one question. Um, so. My girl, am I reading this right? So development charges. The the province is saying. No development charges or like. I not, I don't understand, it says uh non-residential buildings. Um. Like, who who gets charged for development charges? I guess is a question.
So there's the black and white answer that I can give you to your question, and then if you want, there's the reading between the lines answer this. So the black and white answer is uh there are many facets to development charges, so they can be broken down by sector. So it's talking here about uh requirements around all non-rental residential buildings. As opposed to privately held. So something like, uh, you know, somebody's developing a housing development, those are for freehold homes and so on. That's not what's being talked about here, being talked about a developer that is developing, um. Uh, uh, sorry, yes, this is the non-rental residential buildings. Uh, so sorry, these would be the freeholds and so on, um. There are mechanisms whereby a developer may be considered advantageous to try and defer some of the development charges until closer to the actual sale and and so on. They're tweaking the mechanics around how all of that happens. This particular communication is not so much about whether they're. Doing away, quote unquote, with development charges or putting some limits or caps on them or what have you. This is mechanics around timing and and collection, uh and interest charges and and that type of thing. There are other things they are considering that have been on the the regulatory registry in in the past, and I'm sure we'll see more go on in the in the future. They're really messing with development charges and what municipalities are and are not allowed to do under some very specific circumstances, so. Reading between the lines is stay tuned, this is not the first such communication, it's not going to be the last. But this one specifically is just mechanics around the deferred development charges and the interest and and that type of thing. And and we may have some staff resources that can provide additional color beyond that, but. That's the best stat I can take at it.
Okay, so I I I, as you recall, we would have many discussions about development charges. And our new C E O was to come back with a development charge report or. Suggestions or recommendations of what this municipality can do. So that's why I'm asking the question. Later date.
Thank you, Chair, and yes, a later date and in in fairness. Given the anticipation the mayor has of future changes coming along. It seems a little bit difficult to say, let's go this route with development charges and then. A couple of months later, have the province completely changed the landscape. Um, yes, at some point, we need to have that conversation and discussion, I'm just. Convinced as the mayor is that at some point, it's going to change dramatically in the future.
Better or worse?
Hands on which side of the country you're landing, yes. Well, as we know, as we don't charge redevelopment charges, it's sort of, yeah, to us, it's neither here nor there at the moment.
All right, anyways, this is just to be received and filed, any other questions regarding any correspondence? All right, uh, we don't need to oppose or approve of. Anybody oppose it, thanks? All right, movement and secondary to receive the correspondence. Counselor E D, Counselor Brayton, all those in favor? Opposed and carried. Um, all right, uh, inf- informational items. Counselor Ustrop?
Um. Thank you to staff and and for our ability to uh. Go on the bus tour of Public School whenever we did that, um. For me, it was time well spent, uh mixing mingling with the other counselors and staff, but to see the township. In one day from north to south and east to west. And different facilities we have, the different challenges we have, whether it's roads, whether it's. Uh, buildings, uh, I was quite. Surprised how many places had water damage, I was frustrated with that, uh, I'll get back to that in a minute, but uh. Then going down south of Highway Two, the roads going to the river. I mean. Hundred fifty years ago, the pathways were meant for horse and buggy to the summer home. And and we're dealing with. Lot different demands now, when you have school buses on them or fire trucks and uh. I say there's there's some real challenges in some of those roads, whether it's rocks or just space and. I don't know how we get around all that, but uh. Thank you to staff, we keep getting through those things, but. Uh, what I want to get to is that we have a property manager now that when I came on board here a few years ago, we didn't really have one. And I'm hoping uh through that. What I saw through that uh tour. And as a result, I'm hoping that our property manager somehow has. Some financial resources that he can fix things with. I would always asking for permission to fix things, like if something's leaking. That's the worst thing for any building. Anyway, I mean, he should be able to just go fix things, like I guess he can't spend a hundred thousand dollars, but. But somehow. Uh, he's got to have resources available, otherwise we got to find. To just to fix water leaks, I'm just saying, put that on the table.
Sorry for interrupting, but you just uh put into laser focus. Pardon me? You just put into laser focus the two two million dollar a year infrastructure gap. That we're working on on closing, you've said, I hope he has financial resources to just be able to do some of these things, well. That talks about that whole maintenance of our assets and everything else, and so so there's a prime example of that.
Maybe you'll.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, uh, thank you, Chair. Um, so the the uh facilities manager is putting together a list of things that need to be done and it's going to go through the budget process. Um, however, if there is always something that happens that is unexpected. It's always the ability to come back to council and say, this has happened, this is what we need in terms of financing, this is how we recommend we finance it. And you can make a decision as to whether or not that leaking window over there needs to be fixed right now or whether you leave it or defer it.
Yesterday.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, to you, to the mayor. My. Wife. Read. I think it was an email. To me and I kind of. It was it. It was a, it wasn't an email, it was a, I think, recorded time, I think. Saying that Elizabeth Towncilly. Gain. Over a million dollars from the government. You know about that?
Um. Yeah, but I don't want to steal the thunder from from our director of finance, who who got the the communications more accurately than I did, so yes, I'm generally aware of it. He can't always speak more to the to the dollars and and cents. So if I may, I'll add a footfall to.
Uh, through through the chair to Counselor Brayton. So the the funding that you read is correct as it was reported, it was in Brockville reporting times in print and online as well as in the Wake Standard. Um, it was the Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund. The total amount that we received, we get this, we have had this given to us in the past was one million fifty three thousand six hundred dollars. Which is an increase of sixty one thousand eight hundred dollars over what the township received last year. And we will receive that in four quarterly installments throughout the year of two hundred fifty nine thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. So what you read is correct.
How much did we get?
One million fifty three thousand eight hundred, which is a sixty. One thousand eight hundred and forty dollar increase over what we received last year.
Oh.
And the his worship, um, um. Was part of that announcement that came out in the paper, um with the uh local M P P um. Confirming the amount of money that Elizabeth Towncilly received or will receive.
Thank you very much, that's uh uh. Santa Claus came early there.
It 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 came early in that pocket, may not have come earlier at all in other pockets.
Well, that's all right.
But we'll we'll take it as we get.
We'll take it as we get, thank you very much, uh.
That's it.
Anything else?
Good, just a quick information item, not related to any of these other other topics. Um, just letting you know, Sherwood Park Manor is having a celebration of its first first fifty years, this is. Not a fundraiser per se, it's um, it's a fifty year celebration gala at the community room in the memorial center. On Thursday evening, so it's sort of a cocktail party, there's going to be a a live band and and some entertainment. Um, if any of you are interested, just shoot me an email and I'll get you the link to where you can uh get tickets, but. Uh, I, for obvious reasons, will be uh attending to help them celebrate that month, so. Thanks.
Very good. Uh, Mr. Chair, just very quickly as a reminder to members of the council, um I'd sent this through previously in an email and for the members of the public. The administration offices here will be closed tomorrow in the afternoon, as the staff will be attending and uh. the administration offices here will be closed tomorrow in the afternoon as the staff will be attending a half day training session at the fire station in Toledo. So just as a reminder for council and for any of the public who is watching.
You're off the air tomorrow then.
I'm answering all the phones. And next week, next week Tuesday as well. Next week Tuesday as well for Remembrance Day.
Yeah, and that uh I may defer to the C A O. Our offices are open on Tuesday for Remembrance Day. Whoever the C A O has uh communicated to all staff uh that if it was ten services in Lynn, uh, they are free to do so. Uh, but um unless C A O advises otherwise, based on the numbers who have indicated, uh, our intention is to keep the offices open even with um minimal staff.
Counselor Renault.
Two four. If you can't go on Tuesday, Sunday will be the Legion in Toledo will be having their service. It's at eleven o'clock and then there'll be a reception at Legion Hall afterwards. Any other questions? What can we do with that money?
I'm sorry.
Is there restrictions on what we can do with that money?
Um. There is. I'm still waiting for the actual funding agreement, um, which will outline there there are a few changes to um parameters somewhere that even cannot be used. Then once I have that, um, I I will send a response out uh to council just to explain if there are any hardcore restrictions that should be there.
I think it did be a string somewhere.
I hate to take it off.
Okay. All right. Any other information items? Did uh public question period to any questions, Mark or Ray? Whoops, seeing none. Uh, for our deputy clerk, any questions sent in? Seeing none. All right, move for adjournment. Counselor Brayton, move for adjournment. All in my favor?